This meeting is being recorded. Anybody recording this meeting must provide their name and address for the record? Anyone else? Anybody else? If anybody is recording this meeting, state your name and address for the record. Okay, call the roll please.
One second, can I get your name again? Thank you. Okay, Michael Saranelli.
Here.
Salo DePaula.
Here.
Cynthia Labrie here, Tom Renowitz, Samuel Shamsky.
Here.
Lee Puleat. James Dawson.
Here.
And Nick Kaiser.
Excuse, oh, I'm sorry, he's actually on Zoom.
Okay.
Okay, first off, I'd like to entertain a motion to move item two and three above item number one, since those will take much less time than item number one.
I'll make the motion to move out order.
I'll second. Michael Saranelli.
Yes.
Salo DePaula.
Yes.
Cynthia Labrie, yes, Tom Renowitz. And Samuel Shamsky.
Yes.
Five zero, moving item one to item three.
Item, item number two is waiver of frontage to create a single-family building lot with reduced frontage from one hundred feet to ninety feet. Location, Grandville Ave, Assessor Map 275, Parcel 53, Chickaby, Mass. Applicant Alexander Titar, 320 East Street, Chickaby, Mass. 01020. The applicant come forward, please.
That microphone is fine. Yep.
Get your name and address for the record, please.
Alexander Titar, 320 East Street, Chickaby, Mass. 1020.
Just explain to us briefly what your.
I'm looking to build a single-family home on that, uh, on the lot that I purchased. Uh, has a ninety feet of frontage, frontage right now. Um, the lot is sized, dimensions, uh, but just like every other lot in the neighborhood. Uh, and I'm looking to waive the frontage from nine, uh, from one hundred to ninety. I spoke to a majority of my butters. I haven't signed a petition. Um, they all agree. There is a couple that had no opposition, but they didn't want to sign. So I have that if you guys want to take a look.
Yeah, you want me to grab that?
You can take it.
Is there two copies correct?
Yeah, me too, yeah.
Do you need one?
What's that?
Do you need a copy back?
We'll take the original once you're done with it and put it in the file, but you can look at it for now. As long as we have a copy, that's perfectly fine.
Is there anybody from the public here to speak on this matter? No? Okay, open discussion for the board. I reviewed it myself, pretty self-explanatory, really fits the neighborhood. I don't see any issues with it at all.
Just, just for the board's information, this will also require variances from the zoning board of appeals.
I think it fits, it suits the neighborhood and is, um, pretty close to the rest of the lots, so I don't see an issue with that or safety concerns.
And I think he did his due diligence, getting signatures. Nobody's here to speak against it, so. Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
To approve.
To approve?
Yes.
One second.
Call the roll, please.
Okay. Michael Saranelli.
Yes.
Salo DePaula.
Yes.
Cynthia Labrie, yes, Tom Renowitz, Samuel Shamsky.
Yes.
So five zero.
Five zero. You're all set, sir.
Thank you.
Want to grab your copy before you go?
Yes.
Are you, if you guys are done?
Yeah, we're all set with it, I believe.
We have a copy.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, liquor license for a new annual all alcohol general on premises. License for the JNW Banquet Hall location, sixty to sixty-six Cabot Street. Chickaby, Mass. 01013, applicant. The JNW Banquet Hall LLC care of Richard Stewart, 153 Allen Street. Apartment E, Springfield, Mass. 01108. The applicant here.
Hello, how's it going, sir? And ladies, ladies gentlemen. My name is Richard Stewart, uh, sixty Cabot Street, Chickaby. Of the JNW Banquet Hall.
This is pretty cut and dry to me, pretty simple. Anybody from the public here to speak on this matter? No? All right, I'll open up discussion for the board.
I don't see any issues.
I don't see an issue.
All right, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
One second. Let's do.
Call the roll, please, when you're ready.
Michael Saranelli.
Yes.
Salo DePaula.
Yes.
Cynthia Labrie, yes, Tom Renowitz, Samuel Shamsky.
Yes.
Five zero, approved.
Thank you very much.
And just for the applicant's benefit, this is a recommendation that will be sent to, uh, the license commission for their public hearing and consideration on the actual liquor license.
All right, back to item number one, definitive site plan for the construction of the new eleven thousand four hundred twenty-one square foot travel center to include convenience foods, a sit-down or takeout restaurant, a fast food restaurant, and amenities for truck drivers. The development will also include a sixteen-position refueling canopy and a seven-position refueling canopy for large commercial vehicles. Location, 357 Burnett Road. Applicant Pilot Travel Centers LLC. Fifty-five oh eight Bonus Drive, Knoxville, Tennessee, three seven zero, uh, nine zero nine. Whenever you gentlemen are ready, name and address for the record, please.
Sure, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Tom Reedy, I'm an attorney with Bacon Wilson out of Amherst, Sixth Southeast Street. Uh, with me this evening, who's setting up right across from me, John Furman. Uh, with VHB, we also have Joe Balskus with VHB, who is the traffic engineer. We've got Jack Reimer and Patrick Deptula from Pilot. They were here last time. And we've also got Ray Vaughn, who is the pump and tank expert. Um, just a little bit of background, we were here May fifth in the, uh, city council chambers where we received approval of a preliminary plan. We had asked for a waiver, the waiver was denied. And so now we're in front of you with a definitive plan. Uh, we also subsequent to that approval have submitted to the city council for self-service license and fuel storage license. The hearings for those which go through the license committee and ultimately the entire city council have the, uh, the hearing has not been scheduled yet. Um, there was also a mayor's informational session, which I, which happened, I think it was June twenty-ninth. Here in Chickaby, and there was a, a lot of discussion, a lot of great questions from the neighbors. We hope to hear those questions again tonight, and we hope to maybe get ahead of them and answer them. That's why we brought our traffic engineer and a pump and tank expert, so. And without further ado, I think what I'll do is I'll turn it over to John to walk you through the site plan. Um, and talk about the SBRAC comments, et cetera, and then I think we'll talk traffic and maybe pump and tank after. But by all means, stop us, ask us questions, and then it, after when the, when the public speaks, we'll, we'll be taking notes, and we'd like the opportunity to respond, because I think it'd be a good comprehensive discussion, so. With that, I'll turn it over to John.
And just as a note, when that does occur, all questions will come to the chair first.
Good evening, I'm John Furman, the Director of Land Development for VHB. And I have a presentation for the, uh, Pilot Travel Center at 357 Burnett Road. Uh, just a brief history, uh, Tom had already talked about the preliminary site plan that we had filed. Um, that request for waiver was denied by the board. Those plans were actually accepted as preliminary, so we're back, uh, with this one for definitive. Uh, the difference, I'll go over the difference between these plans and that, that, uh, preliminary set. Um, some of the, uh, other permitting we've done, which we mentioned before, is, uh, we had to file with the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act. And, uh, because the previous development had gone through a develop, uh, a, um, environmental impact report. Because the development program changed, we had to request a, uh, what's called a notice of project change. Uh, and with that, we, uh, identified the changes in the program and prepared a new greenhouse gas analysis, which is required under MIPA. Um, and you should have received a booklet, uh, in this filing, which is with our response to comments. Um, and, uh, it has all the, the, the original SBRAC comments with their responses, and there's actually appendices in there. And one of the appendices is the actual, uh, certificate from the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs. Um, and I can go through that if there's any information on that. Uh, the next two items were, uh, the first couple of questions in the SBRAC comments, and one of them pertained to Eversource. Uh, and the, the, the project itself, which I'll point out, has some work within the Eversource easement, the high tension wires. And, uh, the, the comment was that they requested acknowledgement or permit from Eversource that the work would be allowed. Um, at that time, uh, the response to comments, we had shown proof that we had submitted to Eversource. And, uh, earlier this week, we received an email, which I had forwarded to, to Lee and Jim, that basically said Eversource, uh, has, uh, reviewed, uh, the project. They've conditionally approved the improvements we are doing in the right-of-way. And now they're going to start actually composing the encroachment permit, which will have conditions to it. We're expecting the conditions to be exactly the same as the conditions we received for the first encroachment permit that we received for the previous development. So, um, just giving an update on that. Um, the other, this last comment, uh, pertained to Mast D O T. And there was a lot of, uh, discussion on the truck movements, uh, as they were pulling into the site. Uh, we had included some turning movements in our plan set. It showed that the trucks had to approach into oncoming lanes in order to make the movements. Um, and the planning department had some, and engineering department had some concerns over that. Um, in the response to comments, we had provided documentation that we met with Mast D O T and that we had, uh, obtained from them direction on how to, uh, revise the revise the, uh, the driveway. So what I have here is the, uh, one of the, the permits, or one of the drawings that was submitted to Mast D O T earlier this week. This is the original intersection design. Uh, that was used to construct the, uh, the actual driveway for the project, because this driveway never used to be here. So the improvements shown on this, if you can see this hatching. Uh, this hatching, the outside of the hatching is the current curb radius. It's a twenty-five foot, I'm sorry, twenty-foot curb radius. The inside line is a wider radius. We're widening it out to thirty-five feet. So it would be saw cutting, pulling up the curb, and basically pushing the curb back further into the radius. Um, and I'll show you what that will do when we get to the truck turning templates. Uh, along with that, this driveway used to have one lane coming in and two lanes coming out. Uh, we've converted to one lane at Mast D O T suggestion. And this lane is actually, uh, a multi-directional lane. You take a left, a right, or go straight through to First Avenue. And the extra width of the missing lane, uh, is now dedicated to the incoming lane. So the tractor trailers, when they're coming off of, uh, the turnpike, can actually drive past the throat and then turn, stay, uh, on their side of the road and actually drive in without encroaching on the curb or the, the, um, uh, the, the striping. The other improvements, uh, because we're removing a lane, we had to remove a signal head and a sign here. Uh, Mast D O T paid for this intersection, so we're just calling for those to be returned to them. If they don't want them, they're brand new, they've only been out there a year, we'll see if the DPW wants them. But that, and I'll go through those as, as we go through. Um, so one of the questions on the, uh, the SBRAC was, uh, basically, uh, needing this permit before the site plan, uh, or, or recommendation of the site plan being approved. Uh, we submitted this week, there are four sets to the set, permit application, the traffic study, the MIPA certificate, all that went to Mast D O T. Um, and we are very certain that Mast D O T will give us the permit. They've already issued the permit for this curb cut. They paid for these improvements. So it is highly unlikely that they would not give us a permit for moving a curb back three or four feet. So we asked for consideration by the board. We can certainly provide a copy of the permit when it gets issued, but that process to go through Mast D O T is about, about three months. There's numerous submittals to it. And so we, with that, with that, we would, you know, be able to, uh, uh, at least access the site and start construction.
There would be public comment after, not now, sir.
Uh, so now I'm going to go through the, uh, site plan, the kind of generally. Um, the, the, this is the entire site plan that was submitted. Uh, there's overview plans, and I'm going to go through those. Uh, the plans that are in between the overall plans are just enlargements, and they're, they're kind of tough to, to see. So I have the, the, uh, the overall plans tabbed. So this is a copy of, uh, the survey that was done for the project. You can see there was some drainage that's left on site. This is the curb cut that was, uh, constructed. This is two ninety-one, running up and down the page. This diagonal line is the differentiation between state layout and Burnett Road. And the curb cut is actually located on Interstate two ninety-one. So now I'm turning to sheet C three, which is the overall site plan. Uh, and with this plan, you can actually see what we're constructing. Just to orient you, again, this is Interstate two ninety-one. Burnett Road is at the top of the page. Our, our entrance curb cut is here. The building itself is in the center. It's about eleven thousand four hundred square feet, some change. Uh, above ground tank storage to the north. Uh, parking in the front for, uh, view, uh, privately-owned vehicles, POVs. And a, a canopy for refueling those cars and some diesel for like pickup trucks. Uh, sixteen positions and a parking lot near the bottom. Uh, tractor trailers will come through the site, exit around, and they will refuel in this canopy back here. Um, there are seven fueling positions. When they fuel, they pull forward, the next one pulls in, the truck that's sitting here can go in, uh, pay for their fuel, grab a snack or whatever, and, and circulate and then come back out.
No? Oh, yes, that's fine. Could you turn that just a little, so everybody can see, John? You're welcome.
This is the, uh, the site grading plan, sheet C four. Uh, these squiggly lines through here are the contouring, uh, for the site. Um, the, uh, Eversource easement are these two dotted lines, and they basically run from the southern property line, and then they run right through the site. We can, as you can see, we have work that we are performing in here. That work includes the construction of a parking lot and placement of fill. As I had said, uh, earlier, Eversource has conditionally approved that work. We are also doing work at their request to provide them with an access road to get to the two towers that are here and the two towers that are front. Uh, the, the grading and the drainage itself is self-contained. We are not connecting the drainage system to any municipal or state, uh, system. Um, I'm going to turn the page to the utility plan to actually show you the pipe work and the system. But we have an infiltration system in this parking lot and in this lower parking lot. And then those overflow into the depression that is in the Eversource easement. And, uh, through our conversations with, with Eversource, we've shown them by calculation that the water that's going through this depression is less than it's going there now under previous conditions. And so they're, um, approving that system. This is the, uh, utility plan. Uh, part of the off-site improvements from the previous development, I'm sorry, sheet C six. Um, part of the, um, um, off-site improvements were the extension of new utilities across, uh, Burnett Road to the corner of the site. So we don't have to enter the Burnett Road right-of-way for any utility connections. They're all available at the property line. Uh, water, sewer, um, gas, and electric, everything, everything is right here. Uh, these darker lines that you see are the drainage pipes. You can see, basically, collect water outlet it here. These two, uh, rectangles, those are the infiltration systems. So water from here runs into this one, water from these areas run into this one. And they're, the inlet and outlet for these systems are set high with the system actually being low. So water comes in, it doesn't leave until those systems reach capacity, and then it flows out. Um, and so there's actually no flow out of these, um, uh, flared-in sections into the right-of-way until we get to some of the higher storms like the, the ten or the twenty-five year. So the system itself shows that the, uh, uh, the improvements that we're proposing actually, uh, have less stormwater leaving the site. And because we're infiltrating, uh, everything on site, nothing is, is leaving the site property. So when I say that it's less that leaving the site, I'm talking about the developed area, but it's still being discharged on our property. I'm, uh, going to sheet C seven, which is our erosion and sediment control plan. And what's nice about this sheet is it actually shows, uh, all of the grading drainage and, and, um, uh, erosion control barriers all on one sheet. So all the cash basins will, after they're installed, will have a silt sack put in them. So any sediment that happens to be generated and caught in these cash basins will stay right there. It's part of the stormwater management for the site. The site, um, has erosion control barrier around it, so any sediment that does occur from, uh, operations stays in the site. Um, and the, um, uh, the, the gravel roadway, um, is being installed, uh, for Eversource because they didn't have one, and as they were driving through, they were creating some erosion, so they asked us to put, uh, that roadway in. So the site, after it's stabilized, should be generating no erosion or sediment control. I'm jumping to, uh, C nine. C eight are all the details for the drawing. And, uh, I can certainly go through all those sheets. I think there's nine of them, but they're standard details. There's really nothing of significance there, just construction details on how this is all, all put together. Uh, what this sheet does is it shows the truck moving patterns, which I mentioned before, for Mast D O T and internal. So if I'm starting over here at the upper left corner, uh, this is the inboard truck movement. And you can see that dark line in that corner is the new curb line that's being proposed. The truck basically skirts that curb, and it doesn't go over the, uh, incoming, incoming line. One thing to note about the model and the software is a tractor trailer can actually jackknife, and they can actually pull past it and then turn really quick. And we can't do that maneuver with our, with our software, it won't let us do it. So we can only go so far with it. But in reality, this, it will be a very easy movement to do, because the trucks in actuality can do much more than we can show in our software. But the point is, if we're making it work on our software, it will definitely work in, in real life. Um, on the bottom here, we have, uh, tractor-trailer movements, uh, coming from Burnett Road into the site, and then from the driveway going out back onto the site. Uh, up in this corner here, this is actually, uh, fire truck movements, showing how they can circulate in and around, uh, the site. And this last one here is the truck movement coming out of the site going, uh, onto Burnett Road. We do not expect this, our, and a traffic study shows that this is a very minor movement. And when we presented this to Mast D O T, you'll see that the truck does cross the striping. There's a big wide median out there now after the improvements. Mast D O T did not want us to do any improvements to the inside curve to fix that. They were okay with the truck going over that striping because it didn't go into the oncoming lane.
Not, not right now, Bill. It's, we'll, we'll open it up to the public in a little while.
Uh, this is the landscaping plan. Uh, one of the comments from, uh, uh, the, the current SBRAC was that the existing conditions is kind of bleached out a little too much, and you really can't tell where you are on the site. It just looks like a bunch of trees. So one of the comments we're going to do is darken up the existing conditions so you can see it more. But in general, it's basically the same landscape plan that was submitted at the, uh, preliminary set. We had made some revisions to this for some tree species, um, from those previous SBRAC comments. That's all included in here. So sheet L four oh one and L four oh two are the landscaping plans. We get to sheet ES one point two. This is the lighting plan, the illumination plan. And it basically shows the locations of the light fixtures with, within the site. The, uh, the site, this is actually rotated ninety degrees from the rest of the plan set. The, I don't know why the lighting designer did it, but it's, it's opposite. But all the light fixtures that are specified are LED and they're dark sky compliant. This is the floor plan of, uh, the proposed building. It's a multi-use building. There's a convenience store items. There is, um, uh, food items that you can buy from, uh, from Pilot. There's actually a Wendy's Incorporated or another, uh, uh, national fast food chain incorporated into the design. In the back, there's restrooms, and then there's facilities to, uh, to accommodate truckers. Should they need to, uh, freshen up, come back here, there is all. No overnight parking. No overnight parking, and, uh, there's no overnight sleeping on this facility. Uh, the last couple pages are the sign package. Uh, so on the previous, uh, submittal, we had three high-rise signs. We've actually changed that. So this is the sign that will be located near the driveway. And then the next sheet is the signs on the building associated with the drive-through and then the, um, uh, pilot in the, the branding. Um, so the, hold on one second. Well, the only other, uh, plans to present to you are, are the exterior elevations. These have not changed from the, uh, previous submittal that you've seen. This is actually standing in the driveway, looking at the building, kind of in a southwest direction. The next one is in the corner of the parking lot, kind of where the Eversource easement driveway starts, looking at the building from the opposite corner. And that is it for the site plan presentation. Um, I'd like to ask Joe Balskus, who is our traffic engineer, to come up and walk us through traffic.
Good evening. For the record, Joe Balskus, I am Director of Transportation Systems for VHB in Springfield office. And do a brief, uh, presentation of the traffic study that was, uh, prepared and submitted. Um, and obviously, MIPA has approved it, and we're working, working through, uh, the Mast dot approval process. Molly Paz has been involved with the traffic study along. She's helped me with the presentation. And I want to talk about a couple things. Um, in, in terms of the site itself, I am familiar with the site itself. I actually worked on the roundabout project further to the east, in the early stages of concept design. And I, and I know this area very well as well. I've, I've driven it a few times. Uh, I was out today looking at it and understand the site location. And I gotta say that having a travel center so close to a, an, an interchange for a Mass Pike is what you want to have. You're not traveling over any local roads, any side roads. This is where you want to have this kind of use, generating traffic and, and close proximity to that. So, so the Pilot Center, Travel Center, as John mentioned, sixteen fueling positions, diesel trucks, uh, we fast food restaurant, the drive-through window, and obviously, uh, a market and public space. Um, and we, we focus on comparing this to the previous mixed-use approval for a project. Um, and we use ITE data, the Institute of Transportation Engineers. We use a trip generation manual, which is a nationally-accepted manual for generating traffic. And we use that to compare to the previous approval of mixed-use development. And this table here. And this table here. This, this table here shows in, in the, the trip generation from the previous development. For the weekday morning, weekday evening, instead of midday peak hours. And that, that's what we look at. Look at the peak hours. For the impacts uh, as a traffic study. We look at those peak hours. That's where the traffic is, is greatest in those hours. We do the capacity analyses and we look at how they're affected by the, the traffic and. For the previous development versus the proposed development, then that change is really small. There, there's a Thursday, there's a, there's a reduction of, of like thirty-four vehicles projected in a weekday morning peak hour. And then in the afternoon, with a little bit of an increase in the afternoon peak hour and Saturday. So. There's really not much of a change, if you will, in terms of traffic from the previously approved mixtures development to this one. And that, that's based upon solid data. Uh, that's based upon ITE. It's Mastah MIPA accepted trip generation rates that have been approved. And so you, you know, there could be questions about that, but you have acceptance from MIPA. So those numbers are real and they're based on hundreds of studies across the country. And, and as well as actual data we have from the travel centers. So that, that table shows, shows that the, the really minimal change, if you will, in traffic being generated. And from there, we did the level service analysis. I was going to show that. And this basis, this is the afternoon peak hour. And level service is basically, as you, but I'll know A to F, F being the worst, A being the best. And we did a comparison of the level service analysis from twenty twenty-eight. We're looking out, you know, six years from now, basically in terms of the. The traffic, we grow the traffic six years from now and we look at how this intersection is going to operate. Now Mastah, as we talked about, has improved his intersection. Uh, and they proved the inner, the interchange intersection as well. So there's been improvements done to accommodate traffic from the previous approval project as well as this project. So as you can see there, in terms of the level service, you don't see any Fs, okay? Fs is, F is a problem. You don't see any Es, okay? And this is, this is showing you by approach, this intersection, this main intersection. Of First Avenue and, and Burnett Road and our side driveway. And you see some, you see a D there, you know, you see some uh, Bs and As. So. The bottom, bottom row is your overall. We look at overall, but we also look at individual approaches. And overall, we're not seeing a change in level surface B with our traffic, with the improvements. But we also look at as traffic engineers, the approaches. Where, is there any approaches that are, that are affected and, and significantly impacted? By, by this project. And you don't see that. You, you, you look at the numbers, the delays. And this is all based upon industry accepted, MIPA, Mastah accepted software analysis, how we analyze intersections. This is what Mastah uses for their own intersection analysis. So we're using the same Mastah software for analysis and you see there. You're really not seeing any change. And, and as a traffic engineer, we are required to look at impacts. What's being impacted? Is the delay being impacted? Is the level service being impacted? And that's, that's a warning sign to us. If there's an impact, we look at that and is there any mitigation required to do that? We don't have that here. Okay, we, this intersection can accommodate this additional traffic, even though it's a net small increase from the approved. Looking at as new traffic, it's not, it's not a significant change in terms of the delays. And, and the level of service. And you can see there, you just go across from row to row, from column to column, you're not really seeing any changes. Uh, significant changes in the operation of the intersection. So I, I think I could leave it at that. The, the traffic study has been done, traffic counts have been done, MIPA has approved that Mastah is looking at it. We think Mastah is going to prove it as well. Uh, you're going through the process Mastah right now. And they, they've all accepted the methodology, the analysis that's been done for this intersection, for the, for this project. And I, I think, I think it's safe to say that, that this intersection can readily accommodate this project. Um, without significant impact to the operation of the intersection. And with that, that's your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, at the uh, um, last meeting and in some meetings that have occurred since that last planning board meeting, there's been some concern raised. About the above-ground storage tanks. So Pilot has um, invited a tank specialist.
No, sir. You can't now. It's not a time for public comment. I'm telling you, you cannot. I am the chairman and we are not open to public right now. Thank you.
So uh, Pilot has brought uh, Ray Vaughn, who is their tank specialist. And he has some comments to offer about the above-ground storage tanks, how they're composed and uh, uh, safety with them. So Ray, if you could come up and make that presentation, that'd be great. After Ray uh, gets through, I'll be back. Uh, I was handed the sprack comments and we can go through those.
Very good.
How you doing? I'm Ray Vaughn with American Petroleum out, out of New York. Um, they had offered some suggestions about. The last meeting and the problems that people were seeing with. Sure. Um, there was some problems that was listed about concerns of the above-ground storage tanks that's going in. And uh, I told them I would come and speak on the behalf and what they're installing. Uh, these are, on the diesel side is four twelve thousand gallon above ground tanks. Uh, as far as I'm concerned. It's the safest thing that you can use uh, as far as the environment. Um, we have pre, over pressurization release. We have continuous monitoring of the intersection space of the tank. We have uh, monitoring of the product levels of the tank. Uh, this site is. Protected by fencing. It's also protected by guardrails and it's not in a common dry path area. So even the piping that's connected to it is connected to a mechanical pressure leak detector. So if the pressure drops. The line stopped pumping. It goes into a slow flow, alerts everyone that there's a problem that needs to be checked out. Um, also with pilot and what they do, which now you don't see very often. They have an outside third-party service that oversees and watches the fuel sales and they compare the fuel sales and the product levels that drop in the tank. With their purchase sales. So if they see product levels dropping in the tank without a purchase to back it up. It's alarmed that goes off that, hey, this needs to be checked out. So you know, I will answer any other questions that might come up, but I wanted to, everybody to understand that the above-ground storage tank. Uh, just the ability to see a problem um, is, is huge. It's great. I mean, if I had a tank. Uh, this is what I would do. I've been doing this for thirty-four years. And uh, I've seen a lot of problems. The majority of my problems I've seen with underground tanks because you just don't, you can't see what's going on. Um, plus, you know, things have gotten better. The monitoring has gotten better. Uh, everybody has replaced a lot of their old tanks and the old systems that has caused problems. But as I've progressed in my career. Uh, those problems are getting less and less and more of the problems have turned into human error that we have to address as a, as a state. So. Any questions? Just, I'll come back up.
Thank you.
Okay, um. I ran through the presentation, you know, very quickly. Um, and the booklet has the response to comments. Uh, from the preliminary review. There's a couple items that are kind of worth pointing out. Um, rather than going through that whole entire response to comments because I just got a, another one from the current sprack. So the highlights from the, the, the preliminary review, uh, basically one of them was pertaining to this parking lot. Um, and there was a distance requirement of a hundred and fifty feet from where the parking lot uh, ended or started to the end. And we exceeded that based on how we calculated the hundred and fifty feet. So working with ever source, we shortened this up. And a hundred and fifty feet basically stops, starts from this area that had the turnaround and we are approximately a hundred and twenty-six feet in. So we've addressed that comment and that's on this plan set. Um, one of the comments that was brought up at the last meeting was with the containment area on the tanks. And we had mentioned that, you know, we have a valve on the tank that it's normally open. And if there's a problem, you tend it will run out and shut it. And, and I think it was described as being reactive versus proactive. So uh, Pilot has reviewed that procedure and that valve will now be normally closed. And so what will happen in a rain event, the ring will actually back up in the containment. And then the uh, uh, employee will go out and look at it. And if there is a sheen on that. Uh, they call and have it pumped. If there's no sheen, they open up the valve, they drain it and they close it again. So we've changed the standard procedure on that. Um, we've talked about the signage before, so I won't go through that again. Uh, one of the comments was adding some outdoor seating in light of COVID. Uh, we have a small area that's added between the building and this parking lot. And I believe we have some additional comments on the, the sprack for that as well, for the new ones. Uh, adding EV chargers, electric vehicle chargers. So we added four in the front here. Um, so, and those um. Uh, basically are signed so that uh, anyone with electric vehicle can pull in there and charge. And uh, the last one is basically on the fire suppression system. So uh, update on that is, and that's in the sprack comment as well, is that the code analysis that was done by the fire protection engineers. Basically said that uh, this building did not require sprinklers. Um, at the current sprack meeting that we had, the fire chief that was there. Uh, Captain, Fire Captain, Fire Cap, Captain Turnberg. Um, looked at it and he issued an order that said, based on the building's size, square footage, sprinkler system is required. So we already have comments on the sprinkler system outside from the previous uh, design. So we're going to update these plans to include those back in and address it. And then uh, to, uh, Pilot is having a uh, sprinkler system designed done for the building and that will be submitted as part of the. As part of the, the process going forward. So I have the, the new sprack comments. I'm happy to go, go through those.
Yes, please.
So if it's all right, if it's all right with the board, I'll just kind of paraphrase the, the questions. Um, so. So you have them rather than read the whole comment or do you want me to read the whole comment?
Yeah, that's fine. If we want further information, we'll let you know.
Okay, very good. Uh, from the planning department. Uh, consider providing the ability to expand the electric charge stations to accommodate possible future demand. And uh, we already talked to Pilot about that. We're going to update the plans to include infrastructure for that ability. Uh, extend the crosswalk markings under the fuel canopy located west of the building. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought Jim said something. Um, that, there's a crosswalk that leads from the charging stations. It stops at the canopy. And then picks up again at the other end of the canopy and we'll just extend that striping right through. Uh, plan needs an engineering solution for vehicles queuing to leave the property. So this has uh, also been brought up a couple of times. If uh, a, a POV is visiting the convenience store and they go to pull out into the driveway. The right of way is a tractor trailers coming out. And if you have a couple of tractor trailers stacked. Someone could nudge out with a car. Now you've blocked off uh, the ability for um, uh, cars to come in the site. Or, or trucks. So we have a couple of solutions uh, to that. Um, first is we're putting a, a, a second stop bar uh, in advance of uh, that driveway. So trucks have to stop there. Um, I don't know if there's any in Chicopee, but I know Hoyoke has uh, the do not block the box. You basically. Paint the big blocks and sign it. So that'll prevent tractor trailers from actually pulling forward. So if there's a car waiting to get out, they have the ability to pull in there. Um, so uh, and then, and signage. Uh, on the car side, uh, do not pull forward until clear. Um, so with those three items, we feel that that's going to help alleviate that situation that is a concern. Um, planning department defers to engineering regarding trailers leaving the site, heading north on Burnett Road and crossing over the painted traffic. Uh, they provide a comment on that later. So I'll skip that for now. Justify the need for, or consider reducing the pavement in the southeast corner per the plans. A truck traffic does not have to utilize this paved area. We ran it, another analysis. I'm just going to flip the plan over so I can show you where that is.
Yes, please.
So the, the analysis that we, we did shows a truck basically pulling out of the fueling canopy and then swinging. And then there is an area that is uh, outside of, of that swing. When uh, Pilot and VHB discuss that, uh, there's always the ability for a truck to not stop where we show it in the model. We have a stop bar painted there, but they frequently pull forward uh, of, you know, any varying amount. Um, when we ran the analysis, having someone pull forward for the full cab, the, the, the truck swing that we had used. Uh, right up to the curb, but there was still a small area where the parking lot kind of curves and loops back that we could reduce. Um, we would ask to leave it the same because a small reduction in that paving doesn't really mean a lot. It's not a large reduction as was originally thought by just taking the parking lot and squaring it off. Um, but uh, we defer to the, to the board on that. Uh, turn all the layers on, on the landscaping plan. We've mentioned that. It's kind of tough to read. Uh, the next one, no billing permits to be issued until Mastu T provides a written response to the planning department. That the current project will work with the improvements that were made under the intersection of Route two ninety-one. So this one, I'd like the, the board to consider. Um, because Pilot is looking to start construction as soon as we have a, approval. And not being able to uh, issue a building permit until Mastot issues their permit or provides confirmation, which would be the issuance of a permit. Actually causes a delay for them and they, they would not be able to construct that uh, this year. They could start, but it would, it would uh, impede them. As I said before, the intersection was constructed under the. Uh, the guidance of Mastot. We had to issue weekly reports to them while we were building it. Uh, it was funded from Mass Works. And when a project is funded from Mass Works, Mastot typically for a roadway project, Mastot typically becomes. The uh, oversight for, for the project. Uh, it is highly unlikely that Mastot would not issue us a permit. For an intersection that they supervise and had control over for moving a curb three to four feet in. Because that really is all the improvement that we're doing. So we asked the board to consider that uh, maybe some rewording uh, of that. But uh, not issuing a building permit until that's issued uh, really impacts Pilot's ability to develop. Uh, the same thing for number eight, no building permits to be issued until ever source encroachment permit is submitted to the planning department. The ever source encroachment permit is a three to four month process. Um, so in, and so we have been in it for two months already. And we received an email that basically said they have reviewed our design. We've made a number of revisions for it. Uh, and they are conditionally approving it, but the permit will take uh, now the time to get it com- composed. All the parties have to execute it and that's expected to take the, the next month or so. So having that tied to the issuance of a building permit again puts a burden on Pilot. If we have the approved project of not being able to start construction. So we'd like the planning board to, to consider that. Um, uh, number nine, provide written confirmations of planning board that ever source is accepting of the grading within the reason. I believe the email that we sent earlier um, covers that. Uh, please consider providing surface opportunities for stormwater infiltration. The surface opportunities are basically rain garden type of structures or low impact development. The site itself is one hundred percent infiltrating. And while the surface opportunities uh, have a, have a. Uh, aesthetic to them, you know, a low impact uh, uh, ponding area that has um, some uh, plantings and special fill in it. The systems that we are specifying uh, it basically accomplish the same thing. They're impacting every drop of water that falls onto the site. Um, so um, we can maybe look at something, but the way that we have the site graded, it's, it's a hard fact. The, this site is a, a, a traffic site. It's like a roadway. Um, we don't have rain gardens on roadways because, you know, the rubber from vehicle tires and, you know, dripping uh, from engines or transmissions. Has to go into something that contains it. And that's in this site, that's our catch basins. So we'd ask that we uh, not have to address that one. Uh, landscape plannings must be maintained and approved for the lifespan of the project. That won't be a problem. Uh, the proposed plantings require acidic soil, uh, provide soil amendment and um, our landscape architect is, is working on that one and will, will provide that to the planning department. Uh, provide a summary of the landscape management of the stormwater area. Vegetation should be naturalistic and not manicured lawn. What we are proposing for the stormwater management area, which is in the ever source uh, easement. Is a grass that basically grows to a height of six to twelve inches and uh, it gets cut down every, you know, twice a year. Uh, because it's the ever source easement, we cannot have any tall plantings. We can't put any trees in there. So, so. Having the, 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 the lawn, it's, it's basically there now. Um, but it would be mowed twice a year. That, that's what we're proposing. Uh, keep all planned future signs on the plans and provide a note that additional. Uh keep all planned future signs on the plans and provide a note that additional signage will require a special permit. We can certainly do that. The outdoor seating area provided will not be hospitable for patients that as there is no shade in this area. Uh please can strength, consider relocating to a more hospital area, provide some additional shading with shade trees. We can certainly do that. Provide a written report resulting from the MIPA review, what previous MIPA conditions survived, what new MIPA conditions will be added. Uh provide a new MIPA certificate from the secretary, show the required benches on the layout and plans must meet all MIPA requirements. So the response to comment letter had two components to it. One of them as an attachment was the actual certificate that we received. Um what I ended up doing was I cut and paste into the actual response to that comment, what conditions were addressed and what was being required. Uh in short, uh the requirements for moving forward were basically just to continue to work with the state agencies, DEP for stormwater, Mast D O T for the curb cut access permit. Um as part of that review, uh pilot had to pull together uh the uh mechanical program for the the project. Uh the MIPA review gets into the type of cooking equipment, the type of heating and cooling equipment. That's all included in the design and that stated in that certificate. Uh the waiver of the uh, oh, I'm sorry, in the benches. We'll we'll add benches. Uh the waiver for the slope requirement was approved by this board at the last meeting. Um in per zoning, the proposed sign on page SS two, we require a special permit because of LED lighting. And the applicant will apply for that as soon as possible. Uh getting into the engineering department, uh the applicant has made modifications to the entrance drive as requested in my previous comment. Modifications were done with the input and approval of Mast D O T, who ultimately has jurisdiction regarding the site entrance. Um plan sheet C nine shows a turning maneuver into the site from the south will not cross into the ongoing exit lane of the site. Uh the applicant must obtain a permit from Mast D O T, which will serve as written approval of the site access driveway layout from Mast D O T. Um and we've already talked about that. The grading at the south end of the site is proposed at two to one. Let's see if Chickapi has a a a regulation that no artificial grade shall be established greater than twenty-five percent or four to one. The planning board granted a waiver of this. We mentioned that already. Uh the contractor would typically obtain a street occupancy permit through the DPW for work within the right of way. Uh as I mentioned before, uh right away, the Burnett Road was recently paved and utility scrubs are left to the east side of Burnett Road. No cutting of the new road pavement will be required or allowed for this project. That is true. The fire department, uh the fire department is ordering the installation of a sprinkler system per Master Law Chapter one forty-eight. Uh and we've already talked about that. Submit the sprinkler plans for the facility. Those are in the works and those will be submitted. Uh the water department, uh most of these are just include with the construction notes, which we um have on the set. Uh I don't know if these comments contain any of the previous comments which retain to the fire suppression. That the last one. Yeah, any and all fire lines require a written letter from a licensed fire engineer saying fire line sizing is adequate. And we'll we'll uh have that uh prepared and submitted. Uh water pollution control, the owner is responsible to maintain the sewer services in entirety, including the connection. Um and that's basically for the pipe that runs from the sewer main that's in front of McDonald's under Burnett Road and then to the two facilities that are sharing it, which is the Pride uh truck stop in this facility. Contact uh Lori Goff to submit a sanitary sewer discharge plan, um which we will do and submit a stormwater discharge permit application to Quinn Lonzark, which we will also do. Uh the sewer service near Pride Travel Center shows a service entering that apparently carries slow from Pride. The water pollution control strongly recommends that some sort of agreement be reached between the owners regarding shared maintenance. Um the uh attorney for Pride has reached out on two occasions to ask if we want to set this up. Um pilot prefers to really kind of get through the process first and then we will deal with that uh after the fact. But we already have communications going back and forth between the two. Police Department recommends approval. Building Department, no comments submitted. Health Department, no comments submitted. Conservation Commission, there are no conservation commission. Jurisdictional areas on this property. Chickapi Electric Light uh can provide the necessary electric service. At the sprack meeting, we're going to continue to coordinate with them for the electric uh uh charge cart, car charging services. And then Commission for the Disabled, please consider touch us access to the facilities uh and provide the required number of uh handicap parking spaces. So we do have the correct number uh on the site. And it, when it comes to anything within the building, pilots, architects will take care of that. And that is the last comment.
Very good. Thank you, John. Uh any questions for them from the board?
Mike, if I may, just before you move forward with um public comment, um could you ask uh the presenters to review uh what MIPA is? It's not very common for the board to see a project that's been permitted through the MIPA process at the state level. And I think it would be beneficial for the board and the public to understand what MIPA is um and what uh what the state through the state agencies are allowed to do with regards to conditioning that certificate that's issued by the secretary.
Sure. Are you ready for that, John?
Let's see if my college education prepared me for this. So um so uh MIPA stands for the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act. Um and contrary to what people believe, it is not a permit. What it is, it is a action that is developed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as a forum to bring all concerned state agencies together to one place uh for a project. All projects don't have to go through MIPA. Um so you have certain requirements that kick you into MIPA. And there's basically, there's there's two over overreaching items. You have what's called a threshold. Um and and MIPA guidelines include any number of thresholds. Uh off the top of my head, on the transportation, uh you're required to go through uh the environmental uh the environmental notification form. If a project has a thousand parking spaces and three uh thousand trips per day and three hundred parking spaces or two thousand trips per day. Um and then if you exceed three thousand trips per day, you're you're required to go through that process. And then advance into the second process, which is the environmental impact report. Um this project itself was triggered under the traffic uh section. So we exceeded the three thousand trips per day. Um and this goes back to the previous development. So we were entered through MIPA because of the previous development. Our traffic program uh was pretty extensive. Uh we went through the environmental notification form. We went through a draft E I R and then a final E I R. So we had three fi- three filings with the uh with MIPA. Uh and at the end of that, we received a certec- a certificate from the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs, basically saying that we've completed review, no further review is required. And then it asks us to develop what's called a section sixty-one. The section sixty-one is a document that is put together that kind of summarizes all the requirements that the developer has to adhere to moving forward. And it's signed by the developer. So for that project, uh it required off-site mitigation, which was the extension of utilities and the improvement of the uh of the intersection. That project's done. Uh now comes along pilot. And the program is different than what was approved. So MIPA has a process that is called a notice of project change. So basically a developer says, MIPA, you gave us approval to build this and now we're building something different. So here's the change. We were saying that the the previous project had this much traffic. Now we have this much. The previous project had this much impervious. Now we have this much, this much sewer, goes through the whole thing. Um because the traffic had changed, we were and we were required to do a new uh greenhouse gas analysis. Greenhouse gas analysis is only required if a project gets into the the second stage of review, which is the environmental impact report. So uh pilot hired a energy code uh 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 firm who analyzed all their equipment um and then made recommendations on what type of equipment would be approved by MIPA for inside of the building. Uh VHB, uh and there's two types of greenhouse gas. You have stationary and mobile. So the stationary was the one I just described. The mobile one is associated with uh the tra- traffic and transportation. So um I don't have enough knowledge to say what that analysis includes. That's, we have specialists that do that. But what I do know is that the end result looks to see how you can reduce trips per day, either through ride sharing, employees being issued uh bus passes so they don't have to drive to work, things like that. Uh traffic uh demand management is what it's called. Um so we went through MIPA, uh we submitted the notice of project change. Uh it's advertised, uh it's a, we have a a site meeting. Uh and then we have an updated uh certificate from the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs, which you have in the response to comment.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you guys understand that?
So basically you submitted all your changes and they approved it again.
Well, if you want to cut it that short, yes.
That was when I came as a conclusion.
Okay, if the board's all set, we'll open up the public comment. Yeah, and uh with the size of this crowd, we ask you, please, we're gonna limit you to two minutes. I can limit you to whatever I want. Okay, that's enough. I ask you, please, limit it to two minutes. We have a lot of people here that want to speak.
I'm gonna tell you right now, it's not in your bylaws that you can limit anything for the speaker.
Name and address for the record, please.
I have a letter that I'm gonna read, that I'm gonna submit to the board.
Name and address, please.
David Amo seventy-two Fairway Drive in Chickapi, Massachusetts, oh one oh two oh.
Okay, right now I'm gonna tell everybody here, um this is a volunteer board. We want to, I really would like everybody to be polite. No yelling, no raising your voice, no derogatory comments towards anybody on this board. All comments come to the chair and I will deflect them to whoever needs to answer.
Okay, well, if I have like thirty questions that I want to ask that these gentlemen, you gave them all the time that they needed. How am I going to ask those questions in two minutes? To the chair.
Please keep it as quick as you can.
This is a letter that was dated today that was handed out to the planning board, the city solicitor, the mayor and the city councilors. Here are respected city boards and council and leaders. This firm represents the interests of your concerned constituents who oppose a duplicate truck stop now currently proposed for Burnett Road. As you know well, from the very vocal packed meetings already attended by hundreds at City Council Planning Board and the Mayor's Town Hall event, just a date to fully support of of smart development like hotels and other venues that serve and draw to the potential longer stay, repeat customers of the neighboring businesses. The potential for shared community growth that this site otherwise presents will be simply wasted by this proposed project. Increased transitivity will discourage and not help community growth. Trucking is critical to our community and national economics. But this location desperately needs an attraction that would encourage visitors to stay and spend their money in the area that would encourage further and smart development of additional businesses in the immediate facility by extension dramatically increasing tax revenue and other revenues to the city and the community. In contrast, the increase in short stop type business inherited to adding a second truck stop wo- would not encourage still more business and just benefit this particular business only. But also would actively discourage the longer time stay and visits to the surrounding businesses and the area that this community needs to grow. This is the wrong type of traffic and this has not been studied or reviewed. Perhaps more importantly, this proposal in particular would increase inherently bulkier, less nimble vehicle volume that would further snarl traffic in the already terrible interstate artery that was recently constructed prior to the standard, obviously from years before this proposal that we believe was engineered for a hotel or another smart longer stay use. With this sustained smaller vehicle patterns, you really need a full independent traffic study to arrest the true impact of this proposal use and how it most certainly can't fit the engineering clearly done long ago based on different expected use. The proponents' recent submission of a traffic assessment only offered by them to avoid the crucial and more expensive analysis of a full-blown traffic study for this use for this facility is highly deficient. We and we submit all the residents of the city of Chickapi and every surrounding town and the thousands of area residents who use this terrible intersection every day implore you to require a full traffic study with independent reviews by the city's independent engineering and traffic professionals. Your positions, you do have the necessary diligence to be sure you really understand the damage, the proposed, the proposals increased traffic volume and the type that will inflict on everyone in the region's daily lives, including your own. We consider increased traffic volume to be an unacceptable risk to public health and safety and it's a danger to the area. Above ground fuel storage tanks propose a massive risk to the community, region and health and safety. We also consider the proposed above ground fuel storage tanks to be an additional massive risk to the public safety and health. We understand these types of structures are exceedingly rare in Massachusetts because there's only one and clearly inappropriate here. We think they are not only inherently da- dangerous and also require some form of professional a- assessment and report by the proponents and then by the city's independent professional engineering resource to enable you to fully understand and appreciate the risk but also present an abnormal risk of being a target of this community. The risk of these tanks is a clearly a huge and something that should not be licensed or permitted to exist in Chickapi and to and to endanger it or to the region's residents. Your constituents are watching you and you need to put clearly state your interest now. We can assure your you that these type of increased risk and daily ag- aggravation will will not be seen in the continued growing opposition to this project. But with the growing organized opposition, you are now seeing it will immediately and long after play will come out in the polls of every city and regional election. We ask that you take extra care here and please do your jobs that you were elected to do. Entrusted with the absolute best that you can fully review the implications of this project. We are convinced that in doing so, you will come up with the same conclusion that we have. This duplicate truck stop is a nonstarter and licenses or permits must be denied. We need more attractive dollars, not penny pass dues revenues on this site. And it is signed by South Wilson, our attorney and myself, who is his client. So I'm going to present this to the uh board. Then I'll let the other people here speak and hopefully I can come up and ask my other questions.
One point I'd like to make is we are not an elected board. We're volunteers.
We have elected officials right here sitting in this room, if you didn't know that already.
I, that's a bit of a derogatory comment and I would like to not hear very much more of that from the crowd, please. Anybody else? Gentleman here was first.
I'm Eugene Chris Villawitz, eleven Caddyshack Drive, Chickaby, Mass. zero one zero two zero. Sir, by the way, beautiful drawings. And presentation with the software was great, but to me. Unless you're a resident up there and a homeowner that I've been for thirty six years. You can put anything you want into a computer. All right, unless you have personal experience with traffic, you don't know what it's like. So all your figures may look good. But I don't think they're they're worth the paper they're written on or printed on. The other thing is emissions, you talked about green. The green gas emissions, right? But you don't have the study about traffic. Planning board's got to take into consideration, not only do we have the Pride Station. We also have Estes Terminal and XPO Logistics. If you haven't taken a drive through the neighborhood, I suggest you do it. And if you're not familiar with the the landfill that's been there, if I don't know how many years over forty. And it's capped right now, that's got to have emissions too. Along with low flying aircraft from west over, which we need, we need for defense and I'm glad they're a neighbor. But all that air quality's got to be taken into consideration. Plus, all the businesses in the area. We got Wall Street Journal, printing shops, the trucks leave every night. You got a D Bold or Die Bold, Hoppy Tool, restaurant people, all these places have trucks. Coming in and out all day long. Truck traffic is a tremendous problem. I think air quality is a tremendous problem. Okay, I think it's up to the planning board. The mayor kind of said this is a done deal. We can't do anything about it. You, I know you're not elected and that's good and bad. Other cities and towns have elected officials. Sometimes when you're appointed by the people in the city or the councilors and mayor in the city. There's a little pressure on you to perform the way they'd like you to perform. I know they're not supposed to.
I would have to disagree with that strongly.
Well, I think there is some pressure here. The mayor did say it's a done deal.
I haven't spoken to the mayor.
All right.
I don't know.
And you probably, were any of you at the previous meeting? The neighborhood meeting? Okay. Well, you also heard the mayor say that there's a. At Pride, a hundred fifty trucks allowed to stay. Am I correct? They got a permit for a hundred fifty? You didn't hear that?
I, I was not at that.
Anyways, there's a respected gentleman from the neighborhood. That went there and counted vehicles. And this gentleman counted two hundred and twenty five. And you also heard the mayor and maybe the trucking people can tell you. Once a truck comes, if they've been on the road for fourteen hours, they got to get off, I believe for ten. And you're not allowed to kick them out. If the lot only holds a hundred fifty and you got, you can't put them on the road and I wouldn't want them to be on the road. It's a danger. So Pride actually has more than a hundred fifty trucks there. All right, all these places, Estes, XPO Logistics, they all have their own fuel tanks underground. They don't go to Pilot, they don't go to Pride. They fuel right there. They also have a maintenance facility. I talked to the terminal manager at XPO Logistics. He knew nothing of this plan that Pilot was coming. They don't use Pilot or Pride, like I said, but they're a regional repair facility for all their trucks. I want you to take all that in consideration. If this is a done deal, I think there should be. So many restrictions on this property that they're discouraged from. From their project, okay? Don't give them the above ground tank. Make sure that they can expand. Make sure they can never ever be acquired by Pride. Or acquire Pride or any other station that takes over there. Because then you'll have four hundred trucks. All right, I want to thank you for your consideration, but I really want you to get these studies done. I think it's important.
Thank you. Young lady up front here.
Jennifer Putnam, one eighteen Dobek Ave, Chickaby, Mass. oh one oh two oh. I just have a few brief, brief questions. Number one, we already have a truck stop there, as we've said. So why do we need another one right next to it? Number one. He brought up all the issues about Estes and the other truck truckers there. Also, what what would the backup of the vehicles be getting in and out? There's going to be a restaurant there, fast food restaurants, the truckers. All the cars, we have the state park, we have the other businesses that are there. There's going to be big backups there with big trucks coming off the highway trying to get in and out. Plus trying to get in and out of the Pride one that already exists. So I don't understand why we need another one there. How long is the construction going to take? Probably several years. We've had so much construction, it's so difficult to get off Burnett Road. You can't get off Burnett Road where there's not construction anywhere. There's still construction on two ninety one, there's still construction on Fuller Road. There's still construction on the American Legion Bridge. We had construction on New Lombard Road. That we can't even get off our own street. Number one, the traffic coming from other areas, Belcher Town, Granby, every single day. During high traffic hours when they're going to work and coming back from work, it's hard to get off of your street already. So now we're going to have backups from the trucks, backup from the turnpike, backup from two ninety one. We all live there. These are our neighborhoods. You know, that's what we're thinking about. Also, emergency vehicles, you know, we have one fire station there. How are emergency vehicles going to get back and forth? Especially during construction, you can't tell me that there's not going to be backups during construction. It's going to be a mess. That's a small area there. And the traffic, again, from the outline areas. I've lived there now for fifteen years. And it's, it's getting more and more and more every single day. I just don't think that that's the right place for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Kevin Roberts. I live in La Fawn Drive in Ward Six, Chickaby, Mass. I have a couple of comments and questions. One is about the traffic study that was done. I noticed that it was a traffic study of a previous development, which I think is the hotel. And the new development, which is the pilot station. Is that correct?
It was a comparison of the two, I believe.
Yeah, I'm more interested in what the what the traffic will be compared to current real world. Versus something that was proposed because that shows very minimal change. I noticed that. But what about from today? Second question I had is why this site? Why is this site so important? Just two miles down the road at exit forty nine, there's plenty of acreage, no, no residents. And all kinds of land you can build a truck stop on that that's available, I think. Is there really enough truck traffic for two sites? Is both Pride and Pilot going to grow and be successful in those sites? Or is one site going to go out of business and one, like someone said, buy the other site? I also, I understand, by the way, that you are volunteer members to the planning board. And I think you're volunteers to support it and and help the residents of Ward Six in the city of Chickaby. Not necessarily outside concerns.
Just to try to clarify a little. What we do is we, they give us a set of plans. We make sure it conforms to wherever it's going, meets the zoning, you know, business A, industrial, whatever. And if it fits that, that's, that's our main job.
You, you don't, you're not necessarily to support the residents of Chickaby.
We always, I mean, we're all residents of Chickaby.
Great. That's all I ask is that you consider that. Consider what the residents of Ward Six are asking you to help them.
Everything that you are saying here today do not fall on deaf ears. Believe me, we understand where you're coming from.
I also was told, I I've written a number of letters to councilmen of the city, the mayor. And I've gotten both written and verbal replies, telephone calls back. And I also have heard that it's a done deal. Sorry about that, guys. It's going to happen, is what I've been told a number by a number of people. And I just can't accept that. I just can't accept that it's a done deal. And I was even told that even if the council voted it down and said, no, they're going to build it anyway. The site owner is going to build it anyway, whether we like it or not. Why? Why, why would you want to come into a neighborhood that's so hostile to this change? It really is hostile and it's going to stay hostile. After you're built and you're in business and you're pumping gas, you're still going to have a hostile neighborhood. I don't know if that's all I have. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
My name is Patrick Solvander and I live at one twenty five Rumors Drive in Chickaby. I have a few observations. During that presentation. And some of the observations I made around the proposed site. First of all, concerning MIPA. I'm wondering if MIPA has done a study of the exhaust from diesel fuel. On the nursing home, which is about a quarter of a mile or less of the proposed site. That nursing home is a Chickaby rehab and nursing home. Right at the intersection of Burnett Road and New Lombard Road. Now we have their senior citizens. Tenure may be ten years at best. Nonetheless, they will be exposed to a certain amount of diesel exhaust fumes. Even though. A substance that was introduced to us last meeting we had in, at Little One. The DEF, the DEF is a diesel fuel or a dissolved exhaust fluid. Which is injected in the exhaust system to basically neutralize the chemical. Elements in the exhaust. However, when I read about DEF. One component of that exhaust that was not mentioned. Was a particulates from the diesel exhaust. If you read Naya's Bulletin fifty, right, it's around the internet. Naya's National Institute for Safety, Health and Safety and Health, which is a research component of OSHA. They have indicated that diesel fuel exhaust is highly toxic. Which is not surprising. To minimize that toxicity, obviously, they have included DEF in it. But it has not, to my best knowledge. Compared the elements of the suit that comes out from the exhaust. Now, the suit is basically a component of dust, metal. And fumes. During the wintertime, when you have an aggregate number of. Diesel trucks that start operating in the morning, particularly in the wintertime. You will see a white smoke coming out. And that plume during the prevailing winds will be traveling in the direction of that nursing home. Now, if you are a relative of that nursing home resident. And you start getting complaints, you won't be very happy. And if it is determined that death of these residents is premature because of the exhaust. Then I can see a class action suit filed against the state of Massachusetts. And Massachusetts DOT and even the city of Chickaby. Now, it may not mean much to the state or to DOT or to the city of Chickaby. That there's a class action suits. What the hell? The taxpayers are paying for it, so who cares, you know? Well, I do care. I like to see my money well spent. Now, another thing about MIPA that I haven't heard. Is a accumulation of silt and sand during stormwater discharge into the drainage system. That has not been addressed and I wouldn't want to see all that stuff going to the Chickaby River. I used to work in Los Angeles back many years ago and they used to have. This discharge into the Chickaby River.
If I can interrupt you for one second, during the presentation, I don't know if you heard, but all, everything is self-contained on that site. Nothing leaves the site, no storm water.
I can't believe that. How can you contain storm water? There will be a discharge somewhere.
There's an one above ground discharge, but it's contained to the site. Everything else is impervious. It's contained and it.
Could be so, but you know what? I'm not quite sure. I have to believe that.
There's no drainage that leaves that site.
Okay, you're entitled to your opinion.
Well, that's what was presented here.
So anyway, so these are the concerns I have, the observations. About, we were talking about a sheen in the water. You say that, sure, you have a reserve tank that will accumulate all that sheen with the stormwater, it will be drained on a periodic basis. However, is that really assured? Because I see a lot of storm drains along that site. Where the the off ramp is from the turnpike into I two ninety one. And some of that fluid, liquid, storm drain that's emanating from the proposed site. I'm sure will be draining into the storm drains. Where there's no way of reclaiming that contaminated water.
Yeah, no water from that site leaves the site.
So it is being said.
All right, well, can you please move it along?
All right, so anyway, what I would like to tell you is this, read the bulletin by Naya's Bulletin fifty. About the diesel fuel impact on the health and safety of people. Okay, because there during the wintertime, you will have an aggregate of trucks that will start the engines in the morning. And you have that plume of smoke. Going that direction. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. This gentleman, then, everybody will get a chance.
My name is Norman Gerard. I live at Ninety Angela Drive in Chickaby, oh ten twenty. Just a few observations. One of the things that was mentioned tonight. Is that there are several permits outstanding that have not been approved yet. And what they're asking is that the planning board and the city council. Give them approval prior to some of their other approvals. The EverSource, I believe, is still outstanding and Nasty Otis still has something outstanding. I don't know why we should approve anything before these approvals come through. Secondly, all of these analyses that were done tonight look good on paper. However, none of the audience could see anything that he was presenting. A PowerPoint might have been a good idea. But a few years ago. The entire Pride Station was redesigned to alleviate traffic, to better accommodate trucks. Today at ten forty five this morning, I went by the Pride Station. The lot was full and there were four trailers backed up onto Burnett Road. So all of these analyses don't take into account real life. They don't know when these trucks are going to be on the road, when these trucks are going to be pulling into these stops. So. I think that, you know, we should at least hold off on giving them any permits or any approvals. Until they've gotten all their other trucks and ducks in order.
Thank you.
My name is Roland Crivier, one eighty one Tulpus Circle in Chickaby, ten oh ten twenty. I've lived there fifty years and been driving down Burnett Road for many years now. And in the morning, that is the prime route for all the people living in Belcher Town, Ludlow. And. And yeah, from out, from out that way, Ludlow, Belcher Town and. and yeah, from out, from out that way, Ludlow, Belcher Town and uh, Granby. Yes, thank you. And that traffic from six o'clock in the morning until about eight thirty, you can't travel to Springfield because everybody in those other towns are coming down Burnett Road. I used to work a half a mile the other direction going toward Ludlow. The only way I could cross this lane of traffic during those periods of time to get to work was when somebody slept in in Belcher Town and their spot was open when I shot through, hoping that there was no traffic coming the other way. That's how terrible that road is. At three thirty at night in the afternoon, you've got traffic backed all the way up through across the river and up to uh, the East Street entranceways, solid traffic all backed up. My concern is that adding another twenty trucks, thirty trucks coming up two ninety-one or getting off at the turnpike and turning to wait to turn into this place is gonna block up the whole exiting from the Mass Turnpike, turning right, which is how I get to home when I get off the turnpike. There's no way to to make that corner. If you've got three tractor trailer trucks backed up, waiting to turn into this place from the turnpike or from up two ninety-one, how, how, what's gonna happen to the rest of the traffic as it follows up? The emergency vehicles that this lady mentioned is an important factor here. You can't move down this road. You have to wait until all the traffic clears. And then all this garbage that you're doing with redoing that entranceway to the Mass Turnpike is something else with that parking areas on both sides now. And a, and a crazy exit coming out of the right exiting Mass Turnpike to turn right onto Burnett Road. You've got this parking area on the right-hand side with an exit ramp going out into the two lanes of traffic that are trying to be trying to go down Burnett Road at this time. It, it's just crazy to figure how all of this traffic is gonna uh, not affect things negatively. Now, the other, the other thing was we had a, he showed a, the graph of the difference between the one presentation for the hotel and the other presentation for this truck stop. These uh, it was a negligible increase. But that doesn't tell you, as this other gentleman said, what's the overall effect on the traffic as it is now, which is terrible. That, that impact cannot be negligible. So uh, my concern is the bottleneck is gonna be horrendous. Uh, it's hard enough to get in and out now. It's only gonna get worse. I, I, I just can't, uh, that's my concern. The, the, the flow of the traffic and the emergency vehicles.
Good evening. My name is Susan Babsky and I live at 71 Land Drive, Chicopee, Mass, oh, one oh two oh. Uh, we're located on Second Street past um, uh, Pride. There's the, the bank and then there's my street. And when we moved in 50 years ago, we didn't even have the trucking company behind us. But my concern is about health. And I was wondering if City of Chicopee ever looked into or the, or the um, public health department looked into the admissions and everything up by us because you can go down my street and say cancer, 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 go down Burnett Road, cancer, cancer, cancer. I lost my husband. I lost my both side neighbors. I could just make a list of how many people have already died up by our house. It's almost strikes me like Love Canal without the, without that type of chemical. But I'm, I'm really concerned about all our health and I thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Uh, my name's Glenn LaPlante, 71 Angela Drive, Chicopee. Uh, I live at 71 Angela Drive off of Burnett Road and I've lived there for over 30 years. My entire, uh, of my sixty-two year entire life. My wife, Susan, and I have raised our three children in this area. My son also lives off of Burnett Road where he's bringing up our three grandsons. My wife has lived off of Burnett Road. Just. My name's Glenn LaPlante and I live at 71 Angela Drive uh, off of Burnett Road where I've lived for over 30 years. My, basically out of my sixty-two years, my wife and I have raised our three children uh, in that area. My son also lives off of Burnett Road where he's bringing up my three grandsons. My wife has lived off of Burnett Road for 55 years. We know what it's like up there on Burnett Road. We know over the past 30 years what the concerns are and the problems in this area. I'm here tonight to express my deepest concerns regarding another, another proposed truck stop to be added to an already heavily trafficked Burnett Road area. As a planning board member, you must also consider the implications that a project like this, if allowed to move forward, brings to the area. It's more than just tax revenue. Okay? It's about the quality of life and how the city handles itself and its residents. I would like to express my concerns and give you some facts on how this will directly affect this area. Number one, traffic. The biggest problem that our areas face over 30 years by far is traffic. When the Pride Station opened and it was approved, traffic increased extremely. Then the jail opened in Ludlow, that added more traffic. And not to mention the growing communities around the area like Ludlow, Granby, Belcher Town. Burnett Road has become a main artery for access to both the Mass Pike and two ninety-one. If you do not think adding another truck stop will make this traffic worse, you're completely wrong. I have a video which I wish I could show you of an average day trying to get on Burnett Road where trucks are lined up to get into the Pride Station. People jarting out, people jarting in, it's impossible. It's impossible to get the school buses up there. Never mind, we've been told that the project will increase traffic between 10 to 20%. That's based on a 2017 traffic study. Does anyone here know that percent, what it adds up to in vehicles per day? Does anyone? No. Take that information and add it to the current traffic. Anybody know what that number would be today? No. We're talking about hundreds of trucks a week or better exiting onto Burnett Road. And that number will only grow if another truck stop is added. I'd like to ask the gentleman from the uh, uh, I believe he's from the.
Please direct your comments to me.
I don't, I didn't know what title he had. But I'd like to ask the gentleman through the chair as far as what the difference between a traffic assessment and the actual traffic study is.
Can you answer that for him? I should. Okay, yeah, he'll give you that answer uh, when you're all set.
Okay. Besides money, I'd like to know what the difference of those two is. Because obviously it costs the proposed builder money to do a traffic study, where if you do an assessment, it costs you nothing but a computer and some numbers. My item number two, public safety. This is a good one. Only because we've been there for the last 30 years. In the past six years alone, the Chicopee Police Department has been called to the Pride Station 670 times. Okay, 670 times. This for many reasons. Unfortunately, public records are not available when there are charges filed. There's been crime, vehicle accidents, prostitution, and we even had a murder up there. That's 670 times in six years. This number is only gonna increase if we have another truck stop. And it will directly affect us. It's gonna affect the police department even more. On top of this, has anyone done research on the above-ground storage tanks? The dangers, situations that they may arise? And why would they want to put an above-ground tank in when next to them, the truck stop has two in-ground tanks? Makes no, that doesn't make any sense. Nor the fact that a lot next door to Pride has roughly, let's just say a hundred parking spots. He's got a tank for 25,000 gallons of fuel. You're talking about adding two tanks here for almost up to 88,000 gallons of fuel for eighteen parking spots. That's a little absorbent. Eighty-eight thousand gallons of fuel compared to eighteen spots, compared to Pride with a hundred parking spots, who's got 25,000 gallons of tank storage. That seems absorbent. Catastrophic failures in storage tanks. Everyone wants to look it up. You just look it up. Catastrophic, catastrophic failures on above storage tanks. Do some research. Next, I think it's, we should also look at the type of business that's seeking approval. I believe that as a planning board member, it is your job to also consider the applicant and the scope of the project being submitted. Like doing a background check on the company and how they run their business and that is, is it a good fit for our city? Do you know that Pilot was accused and committed of a rebate scandal against the same people or companies who use their services? There are the same people that they are enticing to come in and use their services. These are trucking companies and independent owners. They settled an out-of-court settlement for $200 million in restitution. Is that a business that you want in our city? I don't think so. How about ethics, company ethics? I've got reviews from Pilot employees about how they treat their health, about how their cleanliness is disgusting in their restrooms and their, it's all available. You just want to go on the internet, you can see it. It's all there. And next, the Mass Pike Reconstruction Plan. Has this board really looked at the reconstruction plan provided by the state DPW? Did you see how the vehicles will be exiting the Mass Pike onto Burnett Road? If you look at the map from the yield sign where they will be coming off to the light, that's 400 feet. I measured it last night. I, I walked it off with a tape measure. It's 400 feet. The average length of a tractor trailer truck is 73 feet long, plus pending on if it's a cab over, sleepover, that kind of stuff. You put two tractor trailers that come out of that yield sign to a stop, the first one could be going to the Pride, the second one might be going to the new truck stop. You've got cars backed up everywhere. Never mind the existing traffic that's flying down two ninety-one because they see a green light. You're, it's, it's, it's a disaster waiting to happen. Not to mention more trucks will be backed up at the yield trying to enter Burnett Road with ongoing traffic from two ninety-one to Burnett Road. This is not only a problem, but a safety situation, especially in the morning when school buses are stuck in traffic, trying to get through the traffic to exit onto Fuller Road. Also, I'm not sure if it's, it's, it's known yet, but I believe there's actually a school that's gonna be going into behind the bowling alley for handicapped people, children. Those people takes the small buses. That's more traffic that's gonna be exiting that set of lights with kids in the morning trying to get into school, trying to get them out of there. This area can't handle that. They just can't handle all this traffic. It's easy to say it when you don't live there, but when you live there day to day and see it, you would understand. I know what you guys are going through. I am an appointed member on the board in Chicopee. So I know you're, you're not, you're basically appointed and you accepted the appointment. So I know what you're going through. Okay? And in closing, there's only one thing I could say. This, if this project moves us forward, other than tax revenue, that's the only good thing that could come of it. It's time we take care of the residents, their needs, as they also pay taxes to our city. We should have a voice on what happens in our area, especially when it will directly affect our lives. This will put more strain on this area and the people who live in it. This will also port more of a strain on your police department as they will most likely be called to this location several times a month. I would ask that this project be put on hold. I would also ask that we actually have a current traffic study done so we can actually see the real numbers. And the current traffic study should be done on cars exiting the Mass Pike to Burnett Road and also on the cars that are coming from two ninety-one to Burnett Road. You're gonna see that that study is way more than an assessment that was done by a computer. I just thank you for your time. I appreciate uh, the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the crowd that would like to speak?
Oh, Mr. Chairman.
Cause I also have people on Zoom that I'm gonna have to get to also.
Mr. Chairman, behind you. Uh, yeah, that's fine. Whatever, whatever you prefer.
It's up to you. I'll give you the option.
Uh, yeah, sure. I'll speak if you don't mind. I'll be brief.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, sir. Derek Dovis, 70 Post Road, Chicopee City Council. Uh, well, first of all, I want to say um, that the city council utility subcommittee uh, has a hearing for Monday, July 25th, six thirty, fourth floor of city hall. We're gonna be studying the uh, above-ground gas tanks with EverSource. I hope that the applicant also attends that meeting. It was just set today. So I don't know if the notification went out or not. Uh, Monday, July 25th, six thirty, fourth floor of city hall. Uh, hundreds of my constituents are opposed to this. Uh, we had, you know, at least 60 people called the city council's office against it. Uh, it's just not in the interest of the neighborhood. Uh, you know, we're not against development, but we're against dangerous development. And this is a lot different than what was proposed to us for this property in 2018. This is actually radically different. Uh, I just want the planning board to uh, to uh, take that into consideration. Uh, you know, I'm not gonna repeat everything that was said, but obviously traffic's a big issue. We would like an independent traffic uh, study if possible. And the other, the other thing that I feel like is not being discussed enough is that uh, trucks are stopping traffic multiple times because trucks are gonna go on this property. They're gonna refuel and they can't stay there overnight. So they're gonna pull back out and then into Pride and then eventually back out into Burnett Road again. So that I believe they're gonna stop traffic way too many times. So I hope that's addressed. Uh, another concern of mine, uh, May 5th was the first planning board uh, hearing. Uh, the company, Chicopee Inc., one of the companies applying for the um, permit uh, was defunct until July 7th. They did not pay their state taxes. They were closed by a court order. Uh, I, I just, I believe that's grounds for dismissal alone. How can a defunct company be applying for um, you know, a site plan? Uh, I, I don't believe that's appropriate. Uh, just the last thing I want to add is that, you know, a lot of uh, people are saying, you know, our planning board members might say there's no legal grounds for, for voting no. Or um, some city councillors are saying that it's a done deal. There's no such thing as a done deal. Uh, that's completely inappropriate. And I want to remind the planning board that, you know, this would not be coming to a vote if you didn't have the legal authority to block it. Uh, so please, um, you know, I'd be more than happy to, you know, meet with any of you privately, go over, you know, bylaws and city charter. Uh, you know, there, there are grounds to uh, you know, legal grounds to deny it. Uh, and I hope you take the uh, the concerns into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. So any of the folks on Zoom that wish to speak, I'll uh, call you off by name on the uh, screen here. I have Nick Kaiser.
Nick is staff, uh, Mike. So he's just listening and he's.
All right, um, Jack Kelly.
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, uh, but I've been finding the comments very interesting. Thank you for allowing me to attend.
Thank you. Uh, Debbie. All right, I have a number three oh five, Mark D. DeFranco. Mark DeFranco.
Pass. Thank you very much. I appreciate you having me on though.
Thank you. Uh, Chris Davis. No, nothing from Chris Davis. And I have Patrick's iPad.
This is Patrick's iPad. Thank you for having me on this evening.
Okay, you have any comment?
I think that, um, when you look at the development for the area, if the property is zoned properly, uh, then the development should move forward.
Okay, is that it, Patrick? Thank you.
Yes.
Sir, can we just get her name and address for the record, please? I didn't hear.
Yeah, whoever's on Patrick's iPad, uh, please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name's Patrick Davis. My address is Versailles, Kentucky. That's correct. I'm a developer. I do projects all over the country, so.
Okay, thank you.
No personal tax, please.
Yes, um, so if there's nobody else, I'll have, Mr. Amos, I know you have more to say.
I'm just, I just want to do a couple of things that wasn't out. The gentleman, um, I know he's going to come up about the, um, the traffic report. As Glenn mentioned, most of you people probably don't know, there's going to be a new school opening up in September at the Dow Jones Building. Hundred and thirty handicap kids that are going to be going there, which is not on your traffic study. We have all the new development on East Main Street that's going to be coming up there. That's not on your traffic study. Um, I don't know if anybody has talked to the Department of Homeland Security. Um, in the email that I, that, just a general email. The Department of Homeland Security for the United States does not recommend above-ground gas tanks for security reasons. Um, you guys have not come up with it in any of the meetings that we've had on anything about security for your facility. Pride has security on their back lot, on their front lot. You guys have proposed to us nothing. I find it hard to believe on the scrap report that the Health Department and the Police Department gave you zero on any on, on anything. It's, you know, and talking to the police chief the other day, that was at the meeting at Little One School, which we had what, about three hundred people there. He had some concerns and it was one of those scrap things. So I'm, I'm shocked that the Police Department didn't have anything. Um, the fellow who presented the curb cuts and all that stuff, I don't even know if you've driven a tractor-trailer truck. I have. And you can make that thing.
Easy, John. Please, you're directed.
Oh, you can make that thing fifty feet bigger. And you know what? You're not going to, you're not going to drive a tractor-trailer truck in, especially if you have one that's coming out. So I, you know, I don't know who's coming with this stuff. And just lastly, you know, if you guys approve this thing and we don't even have the approval for Mass DOT, shame on us. You don't approve a permit until all your ducks are in a row. So that would be highly, you know, bad for us to approve any kind of permits when Mass DOT is months away from approving anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we get you to come up and, uh, give them a brief summary of the traffic questions that we have?
For the record, Joe Valskis, VHP. So there's several issues I want, I do want to address, uh, from the questions that were presented. Let me start with a couple of things. Um, in regards to the independence of the traffic study being developed. I had this accusation for many, many times. I've been doing this work for thirty-three years. Um, and I can tell you, it's my, I'm bound by my ethics as an engineer to prepare an independent traffic study. We are, we are not guided by the applicant and what we should say, what we should do. Uh, I'll also tell you, I am vice chair of the Transportation Professional Certification Board. It's a national certification board. So I would be violating a whole host of ethics as, as well as my position as the vice chair of a certification board. So this, this traffic study was done independently and they always are independently, number one. Number two, the traffic impact assessment versus traffic study, it's, it's really semantics. There's this traffic impact assessment is a hundred and some pages long. It covers all the critical aspects of a traffic study as a traffic engineer. Your existing conditions, your crash, your safety, your volumes, your observations, your computer models that we've talked about. That's all covered in here and it's in accordance with city, state requirements of how you conduct a traffic impact study or assessment, whatever you want to call it. It is a very thorough document that has been reviewed by multiple professionals. And at that point of an independent traffic study, you can hire, you can hire someone, you can hire a peer traffic reviewer to review this. You, you can absolutely do that. I will tell you that this has been reviewed by the city staff. This has been reviewed by Mastot. It's been reviewed by MIPA. You've had at least three other professionals, traffic professionals who reviewed this and have not presented anything that's conflicting that would warrant having a peer review. We have had studies been peer reviewed. If there's conflicts and opinions, professional opinions between professionals, then you might want to have an independent or another, I should say, a peer reviewer, reviewer. And you can certainly do that. We will, we will stand behind this document. It can be peer reviewed. I will tell you, they will use the same exact numbers that we are using and we're proposing, but you can certainly do that. Don't think it's warranted. You can certainly do that. In terms of existing, existing volumes, if you read the traffic study, if you actually read it, you'll see that we did have pre-pandemic traffic volumes before the pandemic. We used those. We projected those out to two thousand and twenty-eight, six years of growth. Okay, we know a pandemic has changed things. So we're conservative projecting volume. Things have changed with the pandemic. Patterns have changed. They've been lower, they're higher. We projected at, to, to comfort that in this traffic study. MIPA reviewed it as well and agree with that assessment. Okay? This project will increase traffic. Okay, we've said that. This project is going to increase traffic on Burnett Road. It's going to. The approved project that you've approved, hotel mixed-use increased traffic. So shouldn't we talk about increase in traffic? We should be talking about that approved project approved by everyone that's required in this one. What are we doing? Are we doubling traffic? No. Are we a thirty percent increase? No. We're increasing traffic a little bit in the afternoon peak hour, reduction in the morning peak hour. Very slight change in the traffic, but whatever goes in the site is going to increase traffic. We are increasing traffic. My job, our job is to address that. How are we impacting the operations, the existing conditions, the future conditions? We've analyzed that. Okay? We have a plan in place with Mastot, with our improvements to mitigate the traffic. The traffic will be increased. Yes, traffic is going to be increased by this project as well as by the mixed-use project. That is a fact, but we can accommodate that. Finally, this is not a disaster. The economy has made this road a disaster. How the trucks can get to the site? The truck's going to use, there's two nor, two lanes on Burnett Road. One lane can be used for trucks that are going slow, or there, there, there's three or four of them, as you say, turning into the site. You want to go straight to go to the north? You can go. You have, you have another lane. Okay, so you can go around that truck or car, bypass that car in your own lane, go through the traffic signal and continue forward. So we're not going to, those trucks are not going to block your progress on Burnett Road. If they were, then the Police Department would have said, there's a problem here. And I do not fight with police chiefs when they review these materials. You can't. Or fire chiefs. We don't have a fire chief or the police chief saying there's a safety problem here. We don't have that. So I, I, I report to you that the Burnett Road can handle this new traffic, whether it's mixed-use development or this. They handle it. But the trucks are in that lane. You go around the trucks, continue on your movement to the north. I think those are all the questions I had to answer. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead. Remind me the name, was it Lynn? Okay.
Chair, is that question for me to answer?
Yes, I believe so.
So the, the traffic study, if you read the traffic study, we do show trucks in the traffic study. We do account for trucks in the traffic study. They are in there. They're documented in there in analysis. They're included in the computer software we use. They're in there. We do account for the seventy-two-foot-long trucks in the analysis and the capacity analysis shows that we can accommodate that. Thank you. I'm, I'm not going to get a tit-for-tat with, 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 with.
No.
If there's questions asked to the chair, I'll respond to them or I'll wait till the very end.
Glenn has the floor. Adjust the chair, please. Okay, let's, please keep it civil. I know things are getting a little heated now, but please. I don't know if there's been a counting of trucks. Okay. Um. Make it quick, please. Come, step up, name and address again, even though we all know.
David Amon Seventy-Two Fairway Drive.
Thank you.
I don't care who we ask from this, this company. Just give us a straight answer. Why won't they pay for a new traffic study when everybody in here is asking for a traffic study? We keep getting pushed back while we did a traffic assessment and it all said, why are they so against a new traffic study?
Thank you. Thank you. Can I just ask you, what is the difference between the assessment and what is a study? I'm not understanding the difference. Is that an actual physical counting of traffic every day?
I, I, I can't answer for what, what you're, I can't answer. I can say, I can tell you that you can do, you can do one. You can certainly do one. You'll have, and I promise you, you'll have the same conclusion that we have here, but you, there's, 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 there's no, you could, you could do one. I don't think, I don't think it's necessary, but you can certainly do one.
I just was wondering what the difference was.
So, so we, we call this a traffic impact assessment, okay? You're assessing the impact of traffic on the roadway system. Okay, traffic impact study is essentially the same thing. We, we didn't, we didn't do anything less. Okay, we did, like I mentioned before, we did all the, the typical traffic impact study efforts that you do. Existence conditions, traffic counts, crash safety analysis, projection of future, mitigation and analysis. We did all those, those measures and, and we, we call it traffic impact assessment. You can call it traffic impact study. Either one, it's the same thing.
For my understanding, there was a physical counting of vehicles done?
Yes, yes.
And then after that, that would be part of a study. So you did, you count, and then you assess that and then you.
Projected to the future, exactly. Use pre-pandemic volumes, yes.
Like the, uh, school that's going to be built and things would kind of.
Included background, yes, background development, exactly. And, and, and if there was an issue with any of that, MIPA would have said, hey, you've got something wrong with your numbers. Your numbers are, are incorrect. There's something wrong. Mastot as well. And, and that's where I'd say, you know what? Or we don't agree with them? We'd say, okay, hire an, hire an independent traffic, a third peer, peer review if you want, and you can do that. And I'm not, I'm not saying I'm against that. I, I, we defend this. If, if that's what's needed and, and it's required, fine. If we had differences of opinions with city staff, I would say as well. I mean, we've had that in projects where we, we didn't agree with city staff. And they said, you know what? Let's get someone else. Do a peer reviewer. And, and, and we, we've done that. We've worked with peer reviewers as well.
Okay, very good. I'll recognize Lynn again. Is that?
We, Mastot, let me answer your question. I'm not, and I'm not going to do this, but I'll do it right now. Mastot is not letting us do comments right now with pandemic, okay? Because, because things have changed so much, all right? So we're try, we're trying to be conservative in using our numbers pre-pandemic. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Name and address again. Name and address again for the record, please.
Eugene Prisavilowicz, eleven Caddyshack Drive, Chickaby. Can we require the, uh, police chief and fire chief to tell us at a meeting that this isn't going to be a traffic issue?
Uh, well, for our benefit, they had no problems with this set of drawings and the scrap comments they read.
They have no problem with the drawings, but I'd like them to tell us it's not going to be, they're going to be the people in the city that we're going to call when there is an issue.
Right, and I.
And the other people are going to be gone.
Well, as things go, I mean, that would be an issue for the Police Department. You guys are sure you contacted them. These people have already talked to the chief, so. I mean, that's nothing that, we're, we're not going to contact the police chief or the fire chief. We have their comments already.
I think they should be part of the study, part of the planning. I think you should contact them.
I believe they have been. That's why they go through that scrap.
They didn't answer to us. They're answering to people from outside the city. We're the, we're the taxpayers. We're the residents. They should answer to us.
All right, well, I'm just saying that.
Pay their salaries.
Right, for the purposes of what's going on here, just so I can explain that, uh, you know, they've, they have commented on the project itself, so.
Just to follow up on that, Mike, so to clarify, all of the reviewing department heads and their staff receive the same materials that all of the board members receive. So all of the reports, all of the analyses go out to the relevant departments for their review and comment. So the comments you have in the definitive site plan report, uh, which aggregates all the comments from all the reviewing departments, includes the police and fire departments' comments, uh, which were reviewed as part of the presentation earlier.
Want me to read the, the comments for the police, um, Police Department comment recommends approval and what was the other one?
Fires on the page before, numbers twenty-two and twenty-three.
Fire Department. They had two comments. That was the Fire Department is ordering installation of sprinkler systems per regulation. Um, and please submit sprinkler system plans for the facility.
So those were the comments that the, those, those reviewing staffs, uh, wanted to submit to the planning board for their consideration of the site plans.
All right, Glenn has a comment. I'm sure you could, but that wouldn't go through the, that wouldn't go through the planning board, Glenn. Yeah. Yeah, I'm sure. Yeah, not through the planning board. I'm saying that's not something that we would do, but I'm sure you could. You know, there's, somebody could tell you what to do if you just call the Police Department and ask them. I'm sure you guys are not afraid to demand a, a meeting with them, so. Go ahead, John.
Question. I was, um, down to, uh, City Hall the day before yesterday and had a nice meeting with Lee. You guys didn't even have the scrap report ready. And I asked that when I went into the, the planning meeting. So how do you expect the public to give you guys confidence when you're getting a scrap report a day or two before this big meeting? The public here doesn't even have any access to that scrap report to look at it and then call the police chief or call the Health Department and say, hey, these are our concerns. Maybe they didn't think of this stuff. I don't believe, I don't think that's right.
Okay, and that's the purpose of this public meeting is now you can ask for things like that. So all that information's out there and this is a recorded meeting, so. Thank you. Okay, anything further? All right. Yes, absolutely. If you can address, uh, some of the comments that have come up, that would be very helpful. Uh, let me just take name again for the record. Direct it to me, sir, please. You have to direct your comments to the chair. Could you just step up to the mic, please? People can't hear you.
Again, my name is Patrick Sylvander. There was a comment, uh, at one twenty-five Umas Drive, Chickami. Uh, you had a statement about a wet sprinkler system for the fueling operation with the turmoil it's going to be? You didn't mention a sprinkler system?
I just.
That while the fire department is making them put sprinklers inside the building?
Yeah, but that, yeah, but you mentioned the sprinkler system.
Yes, in the building.
The building.
Yeah.
Fire department demanded it.
Yeah, the problem with a sprinkler system, it's wet. I think they may be referring to an automatic extinguishing system.
Oh, yeah, I believe typically that's what they'll have. Your typical foam suppression system under the canopies, the ansel systems. So that, that they were talking about was actually being, the fire department is making them put that in the building. They did not think it was required by code, but it is.
Yeah, okay, so I mean, there's a distinction between the two of them.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
All right, right now I'm going to need to call a brief recess for anybody that needs to use the restroom. Five minutes.
Any water unfiltered? No, thank you.
Okay, we've got a few more stragglers out in the hall. Is everybody in? Who's coming in?
Keep it open, please. Yes, please.
It's an open meeting law.
Have to keep the door open.
Have to keep the door open, so it's an open meeting. I know.
That's the rules.
All right, we'll call the meeting back to order. Uh, give you guys a chance to speak. Hopefully ease some concerns. Please, no outbursts. Let's let the man speak and please be cordial.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your time, uh, board. Uh, just to be clear, I know it's a, a difficult project, but you are actually checking projects against existing code. Uh, i- is that correct?
Uh, we don't get involved much in code. It's conformance to the lot and the zoning and things.
Right, right. So it's written code. It's not your, it's not your interpretation. It's not what you came up with. Okay. Patrick DePtoole, uh, five five zero eight Lonus Road, Knoxville, Tennessee. I'm vice president of development for Pilot Travel Centers, uh, have been with Pilot for twenty-five years. Um, just really appreciate the residents out here and the concern and the passion. Uh, I would be, I would have the same concerns, uh, if a development of our type or really any type uh, was a, in my neighborhood. So I appreciate everyone being here. A couple of concerns that came up that I just noted, I thought, uh, would be appropriate to, uh, uh, address. One, above-ground tanks. The only above-ground tanks we have at this project, four twelve-thousand gallon diesel tanks, not gasoline. Okay, the gasoline goes underground, just like code calls for. In the state of Massachusetts, there are more than two thousand gap, two thousand above-ground tanks registered in the state of Massachusetts. Okay? To have that visual component, to be able to see a tank in its condition above ground for everyone to see, right, it's, it's invaluable, okay? I, in twenty-five years I've been with Pilot, have never had a massive release from an above-ground tank. That's why we like above-ground tanks, okay? And I think your, your, uh, fire chief had actually made the trip down to our Sturbridge, Massachusetts sites to look at that, uh, above-ground tank installation that we constructed last year. Uh, and I think appreciated it, thought, thought it was fine. Uh, so really confident in above-ground tanks. A young lady mentioned construction duration. We're a hundred and fifty to two hundred days construction, okay?
And it doesn't, you're not going to be doing any construction in the roadway. Everything is off-site. It'd just be construction traffic coming and going, correct?
Correct, correct. But just to put minds at ease, it's not, it's not years, right? I, I wouldn't have a job at Pilot if it took years. I promise you that. Um, another good question was, is there enough truck traffic for both sites? Right, our neighbor's site and our new development? Well, that's a great question, right? And that's one thing that I would ask if I was a neighboring facility who sees the traffic issues today at that existing facility. Us being closer, as Joel, the traffic engineer pointed out, we are a better location. It's a signalized intersection. I would argue, and I've worked for Pilot for a long time, we're going to do it better, okay? And you know, how that pans out in the future, I don't know. But I can tell you that if we're not there, the future of our neighbor is cemented for a long time. Okay, and I think that's a, a point that everyone should, should think about.
And also, just on that point, you, nobody can park at your site overnight, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, but that pride, they can. I, I'm asking, I don't, I, I, they, they, the trucks can stay overnight at the pride station?
One of the concerns is, and you can ask anybody in the state of Nashville comes a lot, you can only drive a truck so many hours.
Right.
Okay, you pull that, you pull that truck in, let's say that the gentleman gets something to eat, he takes a shower. He's already gone over his hours. Guess what? He can't move that truck. If those trucks are in the back and the guys are taking a shower, what's to prevent more trucks coming in and all of a sudden, oh, man, there's no room. Now you've got to back out. Nobody's answered that.
What's the definition of overnight?
That's a great question, because they're driving all the time, right? I may be a driver who prefers or, or my loads dictate that I drive at night, so I'm sleeping during the day. Um, so it's, it's a valid point. You don't know. You don't know. Okay. Our neighbor has paid parking. I don't know what the limitations are, Mr. Chairman. There were, uh, another, uh, comments about, hey, let's not approve us if we don't have all of our ducks in a row and all of the formal permits in hand. And all I would ask is, let's make a contingent upon our certificate of occupancy, okay? This is not the, the final step in the process, as you know. Um, this is just one step in a long process. Um, I appreciate your time, uh, yeah, and I'm open to any, any concerns or questions from the board.
Okay, well, we're still open for public comment. Does anybody have anything to me?
I have, I have a question.
Hold on, you're on the board. You'll have to state your name and address for the record, though. You'll need to state your name and address for the record. I understand. And yes, like the gentleman said, the fire department did go and inspect their tanks that they had, at, not was it Sturbridge? And their, the fire department does like the above-ground tank. Yeah, an ansel system. Can you answer that?
Yes, the canopies, just as you see it, other facilities here would have, uh, fire protection.
So it was the question, is there a canopy over the tanks?
There is no canopy over the tanks, no. Correct. Um, I, I don't know off the top of my hand, off the top of my mind, I'd have to, I'd have to do some research.
Over those tanks? No, I don't know.
Correct. So i- i- I, I know it's not appropriate to go back and forth. We're not required to put suppression over the, those tanks.
Regulated, it's a regulated thing, correct?
If, if it, if it would put everyone's mind at ease and you just wanted to write it down there, we're more than happy to do so.
Okay, excuse me for one minute.
That might cause more issues, though.
Pardon me?
That might cause more issues, though, having a canopy over if there's a.
Fire suppression.
Yeah.
Just fire suppression, yes.
Oh, you mean not necessarily over, but around your A fire suppression system?
He just, the officer has to go. There's some stuff going on in the city, so. That was, uh, the reason for my delay. Yes, sir. You may answer that.
I'm confident that when this is done, we'll be an outstanding neighbor. And the traffic issues that you see today will be better. There's a signalized intersection that's engineered, just like John said, for this project. And it abuts the highway.
Yeah.
It's, it's a great location.
I stop at places like this all the time, so I understand the perfect location. Yeah, just through.
Sir, I don't know, but I can tell you that it's a combination between retail and municipalities. The, the reason I, I rattled off two thousand is because I know it's fact and someone from the audience mentioned that there was one, which I knew was not correct.
That's above-ground tanks registered in Massachusetts.
Correct.
That's what you said, right? I, I don't, I don't have that answer. I don't, I don't have that answer.
Please address the board.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't draw the conclusion, my expectation is, yes, we will profit from the truck traffic that exists today, yes.
As well as there's a restaurant. There's also, you know, fueling for cars, which seems to be less of a point.
Mike, I can, I can answer that question. If you'd like me to.
Yes, please.
So the control on any uses for any leasable space within any project site is the zoning. So if a new tenant were to be proposed to move into this facility, if one should vacate, the building commissioner for the city would have the ultimate determination if that new use meets the as-of-right uses that are allowed in the zoning district on the property. As for marijuana products, we have separate zoning ordinances for both medical and adult-use marijuana. And currently, the city council has already granted all of the special permits they can for adult-use facilities. And we have not seen any further proposals because the mayor is controlling the execution of host community agreements through an RFP process, which has not been authorized again because all of the special permits for adult use have been granted. And the city council currently does not deem it appropriate to increase that cap. So again, that shouldn't be a concern here. Additionally, there are many buffer setbacks for those particular uses that have to be followed. And with a school in the vicinity, it would likely not pan out. But again, for any future uses for any leasable tenant space within the building, they would have to comply with the by-right uses of the zoning district as determined by the building commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, for your information, we are the franchisee.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't hear. No. Correct.
Please address the board.
Yeah, it's okay, I understand.
Mr. Chairman, in the twenty-five years I've been at Pilot Travel Centers, I don't recall ever, ever walking away from a site unless it was taken over by the DOT or some circumstance similar to that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
John?
I just went down to your station. I believe it's Milford, Connecticut, that's what the science says when I got off the highway. Before you fly back home, take a trip down there, that's one of the dirtiest truck stops I have ever been to, and down in Milford, Connecticut, it's an actual truck stop where there's trucks there and showers and all that stuff. That is one of the, and I'm in the automotive business, that is one of the most filthyest facilities I have ever seen. So please, before you fly back home, take a drive down to Milford, Connecticut.
Okay, thank you. Anything further? Name and address, please. I can't really hear you. You're gonna have to get up, I'm sorry. Yeah, I understand.
There will be a light there.
Yeah, the only difference is there's a traffic light coming out of this station where Pride doesn't have a traffic light. So I understand what you're saying when they're lined up to get onto the turnpike. Okay, one last time.
Can you just say your name again, sir, I'm sorry?
Yeah, well, that shouldn't happen, but I know it does, that's human error, yeah. I know, I've seen it. Okay, yeah, just, let's all be civil, that's all.
I I I would ask that we avoid just tit-for-tat back and forth and we have them come to the microphone so we can responsibly answer their questions. So to my, to my point, I'm speaking, sir. This 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 issue, this issue regarding regarding the trucks. I'm sorry, Joe Valskis, VHP Director of Transportation Services, Systems, excuse me. The whole system that's being designed by Mast dot, all right? These signalize, this is what you want to have. You have uncontrolled flow from Pride coming down Burnett Road into intersection. This system being signalized will control and regulate trucks leaving the site, and it's gonna be coordinated with the ramp signal. And there's gonna be two left turn and two left turn lanes onto the, onto the highway. So you are getting improvement with in terms of truck maneuvers from this site. It's it's gonna be, it's gonna be maintained, managed by the traffic signals. So the truck traffic entering Burnett Road is gonna be controlled by the signal, it leaves it, it comes to the next signal, it's gonna be coordinated in a new traffic signal system. Okay, so this is what you wanna have, you have unmanaged flow leaving Pride right now. This will manage the traffic flow from the proposed site to the next intersection, which is being improved. So that's why you're gonna have, that's why you have a benefit, that's why Mast dot had no issue with the truck traffic leaving the site and go, I know it's hard to understand.
So for my simple mind, the lights are gonna be synchronized.
Yes.
They're not gonna have that.
Yes, they have to be, yes, correct, the traffic lights will be coordinated, so you, so you, you don't have a potential for that happening.
So they're not gonna have to come out and stop on me.
Yes, yes, and Mr. Chair, I'm not gonna respond to questions from the audience, I respond to, they come to the microphone, I respond to them through you, thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes. Thank you. Well, they'll, they'll be stopped at the light and the light, the way I understand it is the lights will be synchronized, sort of traffic coming out will not stop at that light right at the turnpike, the lights will be They're gonna, it's, the way I understand it, you're looking at a constant flow out of this, out of the new facility. They take their left, the lights are green, they just keep going, they don't stop. That's the way I understand it, and it makes sense, I just, you know. Well. Yes, I guess that's correct. Okay, I believe that's what's being constructed now with that whole disaster that's going on there. Hold on, excuse, hold on for one minute, please, I just, let's get this under control.
While they're checking, what's the date of that particular drawing that you have?
Oh, I can't read that.
This one is August twenty twenty, I don't know if there's
Yeah, I don't know if there's been any change since then.
And this, this isn't part of this project, that's why there's a little bit of confusion.
Sure. This is Chair for the record, Joe Valskis, let me, let me clarify. In in our, in our traffic study, in our analysis, we, and we do, we do show it as one, one single southbound left turn lane onto the off-ramp, we do show that. So the Mast dot project, it's going to be three southbound through lanes. Okay, one left lane onto the highway, all right, so I was mistaken, it's not two left, there are four lanes. One southbound left turn lane and three southbound through lanes, okay? So let me, let me, let me clarify, so the off-ramp will then have three lanes coming off the off-ramp, three westbound left turn lanes, a westbound right turn lane, so there'll be four lanes on the off-ramp. And then northbound, there'll be two northbound lanes, continue up towards our, towards the site, and then two northbound right turn lane, that's where the confusion was in terms of the analysis. So for the record, there is one, the single left turn lane today is being maintained, but they are adding lanes to the, to the, to the off-ramp, as well as lanes onto the ramp from the northbound direction. Regardless, it'd be nice to have two lanes, the Mast dot, if the Mast dot felt that was necessary, they would have added it. There's two hundred and sixty-five vehicles turning left there in Saturday peak hour, there's probably not a need for it. That's why a signal coordination is necessary, have the signals coordinated, so when the trucks do turn, they have that coordination. Okay, just wanna make sure it was clear.
Thank you for clarifying. Hold on one second, let, she hasn't had a chance to speak. You have to state your name and address for the record. Thank you. Yeah, the intersection has been redone already. Right, but that light is going to be green to allow the trucks to keep moving. I can't tell you how many trucks, what I can't, yeah, what the timing is gonna be, but what they're saying is the trucks are gonna come out through their green light and the light for them to continue on will be synchronized, so the trucks not stopping, they're not gonna be two trucks stopped, they're waiting to turn, the way I understand it. Let me get comment from Yeah, I can't, I honestly, I'm getting in a little over my head here with trying to make educated guesses, I don't wanna guess as far as how that light's gonna be synchronized with the lights getting onto the turnpike, I just don't have that knowledge, but
Let me, let me just, let me just clarify, all right, so this plan, this plan shows a side driveway here, First Avenue, Burnett Road, the mast pike is here, there's four hundred and fifty feet between intersections, it's not a short distance. All right, four hundred and fifty feet, you have from here to here, okay? This left turn lane is over two hundred and forty feet. So you do the math, seventy-two, call it eighty-foot truck, okay? You're gonna fit at least three here and even more here, so you've got four hundred and fifty feet between the intersections. So eighty feet, that's five or six trucks.
Yeah.
So if the truck is stuck, you have enough storage between the two of them, but it's gonna be coordinated traffic, so we're getting to the very details here of traffic modeling, we have that model. We're not showing trucks being stuck in between, we have, we have enough storage between these two intersections to accommodate the trucks.
The concern is coming up from that traffic light back away from your site is where their concern is.
Over here.
The trucks are gonna be backed up coming out of the pride station is, I think, what they're trying to address.
Yeah, 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 I guess I heard them say they're concerned with the left turns here, coming here and onto the ramp.
Right, but her concern now is at that light.
We, we, we've, we've analyzed that, we've analyzed that in terms of that killing, okay? So that goes to pride, this is where the trucks are making the turns. Okay, so there is sufficient storage. Well, I think yeah. This is a real traffic study, sir. I disagree with you.
Okay, 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 that's enough, that's enough back and forth, please, this is what I was afraid of. Yeah, I think
Okay.
This is also from August twenty twenty.
Okay. I just, right now, be, you know, before I close the public speak, I really like to thank everybody for being cordial. I was afraid this meeting was going to get really ugly, so thank you, you know, we do, we listen, we understand. You know, we all live here too and we've all seen that traffic, but we don't live there, so, I don't personally, I'm sorry. Alright, so at that point, I'm going to close the public speaking. And going once, going twice. I will say, is anybody on Zoom that has any last comments? Okay, public speaking part is closed.
Yeah, motion for a second discussion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, sorry. For a second discussion.
For sake of discussion, I'll second. One moment, please.
Alright. Whenever the board's ready, I'll provide some staff comments.
Yeah, go ahead, Lee.
Ready?
Yep.
Alright, I think it would be helpful on this particular project to step back and understand a little bit about the zoning code and what site plan review really is and what it means. Because a lot of the comments have obviously been tonight about the lack of interest in this particular use. So I'd like to clarify for the board, actually remind the board of what this process is and help residents understand zoning regulations and what site plan review is that the board is conducting with this plan set this evening. So zoning is a regulation, it is an ordinance that is passed and adopted by the city council. The city zoning chapter divides city land into a variety of zoning districts. In the case of this site, we're talking about two districts, business A and industrial. Each district, including business A and industrial, has what are known as by right or as of right uses. And then there are also uses in every district that are authorized only by special permit, which in the case of the city of Chickapi is granted or denied by the city council. So, we established that by right uses are exactly what they are, you have the right to build them with a building permit. Special permit uses require an additional approval through the city council. Site plan review conducted by the planning board is a review of the proposed use and the layout of the site against the city zoning regulations and site plan regulations. You are confirming whether or not the plans meet those requirements. That is one of the reasons why we have departmental specialists from the SPRAC committee that review the plans and provide feedback and comments to you in the form of SPRAC reports. The building department and the building commissioner is a reviewer. And in Chickapi, the building commissioner has zoning enforcement powers. Meaning it is up to that individual to determine appropriate uses that are by right per the zone, the uses listed in each zoning district. I mean, he would make comments to that effect if the use was not allowed in the zoning district per the uses described in our, our zoning language. He has made a determination here that the proposed use is a by right use in both industrial and business A districts. So there's no special permit required here, this is an as of right use for the districts. So with site plan review, the board receives, in this case, two sets of plans, the preliminary plans which you already approved with conditions that needed to be met and a definitive plan set which you're reviewing this evening. Both of those plans went to all of the departments for their review comments, they are your experts in reviewing and considering the approval of a site plan. To be clear, by right uses cannot be denied through site plan review. The community's control over by right uses is through the adoption of the zoning code through the city council. You are confirming with the site plans before you and the comments from reviewing departments whether or not the plans meet the conditions of the zoning code and your site plan regulations. You can condition an approval with minor requirements to address any significant concerns. But you cannot deny a site plan if it is a by right use. There's no legal court standing in Massachusetts for the denial of a by right use through site plan review if those site plans meet all the regulations. On top of that, this project in particular also triggered state level review with all the state level agencies through NEPA. You also had Mass DOT's involvement, both with the Mass Works infrastructure project that was advanced and the additional work that they're completing now. Our city engineer has reviewed, our police department has reviewed, our fire department have reviewed both the preliminary plans and the definitive plans. I trust wholeheartedly that my counterparts in those departments would bring any issues to your attention if they felt that this site plan set needed to address them. You have their comments in the SPRAC report. It is our recommendation that the board adopt the SPRAC comments from the reviewing departments. I am one for consistency with your conditions of approval, the previous definitive plan for this site required Mass DOT permit and the Eversource permit to be granted prior to building permits being granted. I understand there would be an impact to construction schedule here, but your concern is really about the site plans meeting the regulations. And even though this has previously been reviewed, we would want to ensure that no additional changes to the plans were needed based on those permits being granted. So unless the board is completely comfortable, I would recommend that you keep those conditions from the SPRAC report in any approval you consider. But here tonight, based on the information we have from the building commissioner as this being a by right use, the review of the site plans, the minimal comments that you've received from the departments, I don't believe that you have grounds to deny these plans.
Okay. I, for one, as far as I know, building permits to be issued, I I have personally, I don't, I would rather see that as a certificate of use and occupancy to allow them to get started, but that's from my personal point of view. Just because I deal with this all the time in construction, so I understand what a schedule is like.
Yeah.
Yeah, my personal feeling is, rather than it being a building permit, that wouldn't be issued until the DOT provides a written response and the Eversource encroachment. Personally, I would tie that to the certificate of use and occupancy so that they could get going on construction. Should we approve these? That's my personal opinion from, you know, somebody that deals with construction schedules, I understand that and from what I've seen and heard, that, you know, the wheels run very slowly in a Mass DOT and Eversource especially. So for them to have to wait for a written response that they've already explained, you know, the approvals, in my opinion, you know, I would prefer to see that changed to a different certificate of use and occupancy as opposed to permits, but that's just my opinion. There's no building permits to be issued until Mass DOT provides a written response to the planning department and no building permits to be issued until Eversource encroachment permit is submitted to the planning department. But I think they explain that pretty clearly how everything's gone, you know, through a process and it's basically reaffirming what they did for the first project, so it's just paperwork.
So you say it should be changed to what?
In my opinion.
Yeah, in your opinion, what did you say it should be changed to?
No certificate of use and occupancy to be issued. And that would just allow them once, if we approve these, that they could do it just like any other project, they could go and pull their permits.
So you're saying no, the, no building permit, no certificate of use and occupancy?
Well, I'm not, I.
I was saying, changing the no building permits to no certificate of use and occupancy until those, until those items are met.
That's just my comment, my personal feeling.
That's what I was, my question was going to be, so my other question was going to be for this, what you just said about this to view use and occupancy. If they were issued a building permit and then there had to be changes, they would be taking all the risk of having to rebuild and make changes to their plan, but would they have to come back?
If the permits required changes to the plans and they were significant enough, they would have to do a modified plan approval with the board. So it would somewhat delay them, but it would probably allow them to get some things going. But yes, if some things in the ground and changes were required, they'd probably have to remove that and backtrack.
They have other hoops to jump, by the time they get started, they're probably going to have those anyway, you know, they still have to go through permitting process and some other hoops they have to jump through, it would just, in my opinion. Be helpful for the project.
And also I heard something about for the encroachment permit for the Eversource, I heard something about a conditional approval being requested instead of getting.
That's the same thing, I tie them both together where it says no building permits.
Okay.
Because Eversource, they could
Month.
Take two years, you know, they just don't care, I've dealt with them many times.
I did have one other question in regards to for the queue for the trucks coming into the property. It looks like there's sufficient space for many trucks to be coming in, you have seven, you have seven places for the trucks to come in to get the fuel. And I had heard someone have, they thought they might have an issue with the trucks coming into the property being queued. This is, I'm looking at 33.1, but.
You can approach the bench.
I have it, okay, this, I know it, it, my point is that it looked like there's a lot of space here for a lot of trucks, oh, I see. So there'd have to be 21 trucks waiting to even start to back up. Sure.
Yeah, everybody can see him, we're not keeping secrets.
John Furman, VHB.
Yes, please. Thank you.
My, my only comment was on the synchronizing on, on the on the lights, that they've done that pretty well on Memorial Drive because I deal with coming out of the Warrior Street a lot of time and a lot of the trucks that come out from west over and they get to the rotary and the light changes, they go and then by the time they're up to the next light, they're on their way and they're heading to the bike.
Yeah.
And it's, they've really synchronized the lights really well on Memorial Drive, I think that's the ultimate goal is going to be with doing these lights over here on these intersections. Good to keep the traffic flowing. And it's also pleased that they changed the procedure on closing the valve, keeping the valve closed. So that no risk of any kind of spill would go into infiltration because you want to prevent that first and if you see a sheen, you can take care of it. And having worked in a chemical plant, that's the right way to do it. So I understand with the above storage tank, above ground storage tanks and tanks I've worked with before were quite huge and, you know, take six tankers from rail cars to fill a tank. And, or more, and the amount that they're going to have on sites, not anywhere's near that for fuel, so. Relieved with that. So I had to say on that.
Any more discussion?
So. I'm sorry, I, I'd have heard from other people up in that Burnett Road area that are for this. Not, not the least of one is my seafood, so.
Okay, that's enough of that, please, just keep it amongst the board. Alright, so with your motion, you're going to amend it for these and, yeah, you don't have to do what I said, that's completely up to you, how you guys feel about it.
I can, you want me to make the motion? I'm contingent upon meeting all SPRAC requirements and no certificate of use and occupancy to be issued until Eversource issues their permit and the Mass DOT also issues their permit, is that what it was?
That's my suggestion, but that's something that's up to all of us.
So is that a friendly amendment? Sam, was that a friendly amendment to your motion?
Yeah.
Yes, that's an amendment to your.
Alright, so just so staff is clear, your motion is to approve with conditions being the SPRAC department comments with the edit that the Mass DOT permit and the Eversource permit be granted prior to the issue of a certificate of use and occupancy by the building department.
Correct. In my opinion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Can you read that whole motion one more time so it's clear?
Okay, contingent upon meeting all SPRAC comments and no certificate of use and occupancy to be issued until Mass DOT permit and Eversource, Eversource permits are issued.
Okay, thank you. Call the roll, please.
Okay. Michael Sarnelli.
Yes.
Solid Apollo.
Yes.
Cynthia Labrie, yes, Tom Renowitz, Samuel Shamsky.
Yes.
Okay, five zero. And once again, thank you everybody for being civil, I appreciate it.
We'll be doing those tonight.
That's on our agenda to approve the last meeting. We haven't approved them yet.
The minutes will be approved this evening from the last meeting and then they will be available through the clerk. The minutes will be approved this evening from the last meeting, and then they will be available through the clerk's office.
Right, we approve them tonight, they're not approved yet.
Are available from the clerk's office, they are the official record keeper of all minutes.
But last meeting's minutes...
She probably misunderstood you.
Last meeting's minutes aren't approved yet.
Yes.
No, that's one of the last things we do, it'll be done at this meeting. June. In June, the last meeting.
June. No.
The month after we approve those minutes. It's been a month and a week.
That's just how it is. This is our next meeting.
This is the next meeting.
We meet once a month.
We will approve it.
Yeah, we will.
Still have to go through. Yeah, we haven't done, yeah, we have more business. More business.
What time is it? Good night.
Hey, you guys did a great job, that was a great presentation, it really was.
Okay.
Here, you wanna hold on to my keys? Will we please clear out so we can hear discussion outside?
Can everyone have their discussion out in the hall, please, so we can finish our meeting, thank you.
You're welcome to stay, but you gotta keep it down.
Yes, no.
Hey, Jim.
I have, um, yes, there is.
I was gonna give you my keys, so I don't...
Just do the next one down, we'll figure it out.
I put, uh, I do.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we're still, we're still recording.
There's three A and three B, there's two A and R.
Yeah, but there should be a one, two. Okay, wait. This is the first one, we did two and three first.
Correct, yep.
We did two. This should be four, this A and R should be four.
The A and R should be four. That's okay, just start down here, that's all.
That's why I'm like, I missed something, so this is three. Alright.
Two A and R side, good view is first, uh, two existing house lots that have a single family, call on them right now. There is a triangle property that's posed a process giving lot one a really large frontage and lot two, uh, undersized frontage, uh, of their lot. So the two property owners have worked together, um, and they're going to transfer this triangle from lot one to lot two. Lot one, one hundred feet of frontage, lot two... So it actually makes a parcel conform and keeps a parcel conform.
So this was the lot line?
This was the lot line.
Who used to draw the lines around here?
This is a whole historic lot line that had traveled through, it went across Sunny Beach and...
Yeah, just like Hudson Lake or something, maybe.
The owners of Unilever. They should have done it a long time ago, then they wouldn't have to pay taxes on that sliver that they couldn't do. Call the roll? Please, yes?
Salo DePaula?
Yes.
Cynthia Labrie? Yes. I almost did again, Tom Renowitz? And Sam Shamsky, Samuel?
He's on the record.
And we're, Roma?
Roma is next. Alright, so this large tract of land has been sold to a new owner, um, who is subdividing off, uh, three single family lots, uh, with frontage on Roman.
This is huge.
All three will have the required hundred feet of frontage and ten thousand square feet of area. You'll also see this dashed line, there's this funny parcel that actually runs on Roman, um, that was separate from this. Um, so they are dissolving that lot line so that it's integrated into the four parcels.
What's currently on here, this is huge.
This is Karoo Street, this is all undeveloped, there's actually a significant amount of wetlands, this is the food bank. So Karoo Street and then Roman Street.
I'm saying food bank too loud.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll when you're ready, yes, please?
Michael Sarnelli?
Yes.
Salo DePaula?
Yes.
Cynthia Labrie, yes, Tom Renowitz, Samuel Shamsky, five zero.
These are true.
Do we have to? Discuss it? I, I trust you.
What you're saying, what you're saying, May 5th, it wasn't the minutes, was it?
We're talking about June, June 2nd? On the, on the doc, on the packet?
Mine says June 2nd.
Yeah, so do mine.
It says June 2nd?
Looks like you got a phantom sheet, or you got three sheets here?
Oh, no, this is, when we approved minutes from May 5th. Go back to pages. It's late, yeah.
My wife just called, I don't know if I'm in jail.
I didn't...
They're stalled here.
Okay, so is that a motion to approve then? He wants a second?
A second again.
Call the roll, please?
Michael Sarnelli?
Yes.
If they ever say aye, aye?
Aye.
Okay, Salo DePaula?
Yes.
Cynthia Labrie? Yes, Tom Renowitz, Samuel Shamsky, five zero, approved.
Nobody lives on Swinging Drive, alright?
How do you spell? Drive? Self-storage. Okay.
See?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tom, what time is it?